Cavosa Excavating is a family-owned and operated company specializing in the installation of Title V septic systems. Cavosa Excavating is one of the largest septic system installers on Cape Cod. Whether it's upgrading your current system or installing a whole new system, Cavosa Excavating can do the job. Cavosa Excavating, 508-563-5530.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
I'd like to call to order the open session portion of the Board of Selectments meeting. As you know, we have been meeting in executive session and that is completed. And I would like to ask you to rise and join us in the political meetings.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I have a couple of announcements to make. We were very pleased this week to receive a letter from the Coast Guard regarding Nobska Light. They have indicated to us that they are very pleased to begin discussions with us as to the future of Nobska Light. And I think Mr. Suso has some comments he wants to make about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's good news.
Yes, we certainly share in the good news. As Madam Chair Flynn has indicated, we did receive late last week a confirming notice from the Coast Guard indicating their willingness to work with the town as licensee for Nobska Light. I do want to thank our many collaborating nonprofit entities in this successful effort to date. As my colleagues that we've been working with are well aware, now the real work begins. There will be a follow-up contact occur that has not yet happened with the U.S. Coast Guard that we anticipated in the not-too-distant future. I do want to thank those collaborating entities for their extraordinary work, those being in no particular order. And I know that I will undoubtedly overlook one or more names. I'll apologize in advance, but attempt to just touch very briefly on those who sat around the table on multiple occasions and rolled up their sleeves in this successful effort to date. That is with the Falmouth Historical Society, Mark Schmidt, Mary Harris, Brian Nickerson, Rocco Mafia, and Kay Morse. From Highfield Hall, Charles McCaffery, Fred Greenman, and Nancy Porter. With the Woods Hole Historical Museum, Jennifer Gaines and Arlene Lowenstein. With the Woods Hole Community Association, Catherine Bumpus and Erica Turkington. And again, I am certain that I'm overlooking some of the many individuals involved, and I apologize to those in advance, but I'd be remiss if I did not attempt to acknowledge the many, many individuals so heavily involved in this. I also want to thank the Falmouth Board of Selectmen for authorizing this important initiative to proceed on behalf of the Falmouth community to seek a licensure for Nobska Light. And I also want to thank the many local, state, and national elected officials who've teamed up with the town of Falmouth in support of this most worthwhile endeavor. And thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Again, this is just a brief announcement, not intended to be all-encompassing. Thank you.
Okay, and the other announcement I wanted to make is that the Board of Selectmen will be meeting on March 30th, which is not a regular meeting, but it's a workshop meeting. And the workshop is going to center around the creative economy in Falmouth. We have never actually addressed the creative economy as a board before, nor even as a community. I've been working with various members of the artistic community in town, and we're putting together a workshop I think that will be very different and very innovative, and will let people know what really helps to make our community as vibrant and as vital as it is, and how the creative aspect of the community actually contributes to its economy. So it will be a workshop session, there will be speakers, it will be held at the library, and it will be March 30th at 7:00 p.m. in the Herman Room. So we hope that you can all join us at that time. Okay, and Doug, you have something else to say?
We have three local teams who've been doing very well. They're all participating in the MIA tournament. We have the Falmouth Academy Girls who, right now, are playing against the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical School in Taunton. The Falmouth High School Girls basketball is undefeated, 22-0 right now. We'll be playing against Foxborough at Massasoit-Brockton on Wednesday night, 7:45. We wish them good luck. And the Falmouth High School Girls Hockey Team will be playing at Bourne against Winchester on March 7th. And I'm sure all three teams would love to have either the feeling of support or even attendance of support at these games, and I wish them luck.
Okay, great. Does anybody else have anything under announcements? All right, under public comment, is there anyone who would care to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Fineran? You have two minutes.
Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. Got my timer. Here we go. Last week, or the last meeting, I spoke about the problems I've had obtaining documents through document requests. I was actually given one of the documents I requested very, very marginally, and the second one, not at all. I've gone back and forth with John Lyons several times, and he's given me a bill for, you know, like $20 for 80 pages or whatever. And what I wanted was two pages, which should cost 40 cents. These were looked for by numerous others in the past. And on one incident, or one occasion, Mr. Lyons told John Schneider, and he could tell you about it himself, that because he was on a committee, that all document requests must go through a committee. John Lyons has neither the ability or the authority to change statute or law. We've been playing this silly little game back and forth, two and three letters, just looking for these two pages. And I'm really surprised that Mr. Lyons has even that much time to deal with this thing in such a manner, because it's my understanding he only goes to work once or two days a week. I mean, we've just gone through the biggest snowstorm we've had in history, and he's in charge of the Highway Department. He hasn't even been there. I think he should put his time to better efforts than playing silly little games with people like myself and others. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson. You have two minutes, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you. Neil Anderson, Blacksmith Shop Road. May I approach? I have a brief letter here that was written by my neighbors Kathy and De Mount. Ambassador Mount requested that I read this for him because he can't be here tonight. He has a conflicting schedule. He's chairman of the stewardship committee of the 300 Committee, and he's leading the annual stewards meeting. The stewards being those volunteers who take care of Falmouth's 2,300 acres of open space. So I'm reading this letter for them. Dear Madam, Mr. Selectmen, the appellate decision gives the town and state a special opportunity to resolve the turbine issue. The legal decision makes it clear that there is no longer a question of noise levels or operating hours. They need to come down. It is a well-reasoned, excuse me, it is a well-reasoned legal decision likely to withstand an appeal. Liability for town and state continue to increase with multiple suits underway, one jury trial in Superior Court. Judge Christopher Muse said there was a likelihood of success for the neighbors in the ZBA case. Only daytime operation does not resolve the problem. Complaints continue to be filed on the town's Internet site. It will be five years next month, but the impacted neighbors will not abandon their efforts. Fully one-third of Falmouth voters, 3,000 out of 9,000 votes, voted in favor of funding to take the turbines down, even though it meant a tax increase. And finally, it is morally wrong to continue to spend taxpayers' money on a project that has failed financially, legally, and is causing significant harm. Sincerely, Kathy and De Mount. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone else? Oh, yes, Michael, you wanted to speak.
Hi, I'm Michael Palmer. I'm the town clerk. I just want to remind everybody that nomination papers for the May 19th Annual Town Election are available in my office until March 27th. There's a seat on the Board of Selectmen, the town moderator is up, three members of the library trustees, two members of the planning board, a three-year, three-three-year term on the school committee, a one-year and a two-year seat on the school committee, and a five-year seat on the housing authority, plus the nine members from each of the nine precincts for town meeting members. So you have until March 27th. Come down to my office to take out nomination papers and serve the town. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Catherine?
I'm Catherine Bumpus, but because some of you may not know him, I'm going to introduce Brian Nickerson, who's sitting in the audience, who is the president of the Friends of Nobska Light, which is the newly formed nonprofit that will hopefully be partnering with the town.
Until Friday.
We do have an annual meeting, and we'll see what happens. Partnering with the town to go forward with the license. So we're working on this, and we're looking forward to it. But I thought you might want to put a name with a face with Brian.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Anyone else here?
My name is Jonathan Snyder. I'm from North Falmouth, Precinct 5. In support of what Mark Fineran spoke on just a few minutes ago, I have had tremendous difficulty from time to time getting public records from town officials. About two and a half years ago, I was investigating what I vociferously allege and conject to be wrongdoing by town officials regarding violations of MGL laws and town bylaws as well. And I'd go into town hall and gentlemanly ask for some information, no response. Finally, I'd hand them a written request under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 66, Section 10, which would require them to respond within 10 days. On the ninth day, I'd get a letter that they needed an extension. Weeks would go by, and they'd only partially respond. You'd get maybe one iota of what you asked. This would go on and on and on. It would take months and months to finally get just a portion of what you really needed. So in support of what Mark said, it's not easy getting documents from some officials in town or senior officials. However, on the positive side, I'm not completely negative, I have had chance over the last 15 years to ask Ray Jack for a couple of pieces of information. No problem, he'd give it to you forthcoming completely, he'd give you explanations. Same with Kip St. Germain at the retirement board. They are models of what you town officials should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Hearing none, then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 9th, 2015, public session. Yes?
On page eight, I just want to correct that when we talked about the meeting at the Gus Candy Center, it was actually a posted meeting of the board, and Sue Moran, Sam Patterson, and Rebecca Maffet were also there, as was, I think, the vice chair of the Rec Committee.
It was Dave Jarvis.
Right, Dave Jarvis. I'd just like to add that Sue Moran, Sam Patterson, Rebecca Maffet, and Dave Jarvis were also at that meeting as a posted meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Are there any other corrections, additions? No? Stan?
I move approval as edited.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Not present at that meeting. Okay, then we'll move on to our summary of actions and licenses. And the first is to approve the application for a new common victular license at Cupcake Charlie's at 155 Main Street. Is there anyone here from Cupcake Charlie's? I think it's pretty apparent what they're planning to do there. You've all had an opportunity to review. Do you have any questions or comments? It's a common victular license, so it's pretty straightforward.
I move approval of the new common victular license for Cupcake Charlie's at 155 Main Street.
Second.
Can we add upon compliance with the building commissioner's requirements? Because those were specified.
I'm sorry, could you?
I say in compliance with the building commissioner's requirements.
Absolutely. You can add that to the motion.
Yep, I'll add that in compliance with the building commissioner's requirements.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And the second license is for the relocation of the second-hand dealer's license for cash point there at 350 East Falmouth Highway. And they are relocating to 350 East Falmouth Highway from their current location. Is there anyone here? No? Okay. Discussion? Motion? I think it's pretty straightforward. They've been in business a while.
I move approval of the relocation of the cash point as a second-hand dealer's license to 350 East Falmouth Highway.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And next, we have five petitions from N-Star. The first one is to install one four-inch conduit and two handholds at 67, I'm going to read them all together, at 67 Gardner Road, one three-inch conduit and one handhold at 42 Katy Hatches Road, a four-foot conduit and two handholds at 10 Nash Arena Street, and a petition from N-Star and Verizon to install one pole on Hayway Road north of Seneca Road, and from N-Star and Verizon to install two poles on different street. Is there anybody here who is affected by any of these petitions who wishes to comment? No? Okay, to the board. Doug?
My question is for Mr. Suso. How have we done with N-Star following through on the things that were promised with the Mill Road parking lot?
They've made reasonable progress on those, including the conversion of the post-top town-owned light downtown. We are pleased with progress we're seeing. There may be a little follow-up on some of the surf-drive work, and that's going to depend upon our town engineer reviewing that, but in general, we are pleased with the progress. And I'm happy to confirm that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, a motion to approve, all five requests.
I move approval of all five requests for the conduit and handholds and the three poles.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, the next item is, we have some people here from the Senior Center, is to recommend and award the contract for the Senior Center Site Visibility Study to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute this contract. We have the recommendation here from the Senior Center Evaluation Team, which was comprised of Jim Viera, Jill Irving Bishop, Marlene McCollum, Peter McConerty, and Sally Giffen. And there were actually, I think, seven proposals, or eight proposals, and they have narrowed it down to one. Jim, did you want to make any comments about this, or no? I mean, we have the information, we're good with your recommendation, and it's up for discussion by the board.
I did have a question for some of the rankings. I wasn't sure if that's appropriate for us to go to that level of detail on the way it was judged by the team. Is that an appropriate question?
For us, you mean?
Well, the team specifically, the group that's being recommended, got a zero for qualifications, and I think this is particularly Mr. Viera. And I'm just, would love to clarify as to whether that was a reading of the spec that made that, or whether there was question in his mind on that candidate.
Hi, Jim Viera. Just to clarify, the way that the evaluation question was written, we were evaluating the project manager. So there was a little bit of confusion over if we were judging in that particular question the qualifications of the firm or the qualifications of the project manager that was designated in the proposal. And those are the kinds of things that the interview was intended to clarify, which we did. And we are all in agreement that this firm is very well-qualified, and that the principal of the firm will have enough input over the project manager so that we don't expect a big problem.
Great, thank you.
And the firm that's being recommended is BH+A.
That's correct.
Any comments from the board?
I think I would just say that as I read this, there was an awful lot of work that was put into this, and a lot of time. And I think that when we talk about the Senior Center, we talk about the people that are involved in it. And I appreciate the time, and as I read, you tell that.
Heather?
Just one brief comment. One, I'd like to note that there were eight firms responding, and they were all responsive and responsible firms. This firm happened to be the most highly ranking and was very competent in the interview process. So it just speaks to the project, it speaks to the work that went into the scope of work, calling the site selection to the four sites that we're now looking at. And I think it just shows that there'll be a tremendous amount of interest, and it will be competitive when we get to the true design and construction phase. So that speaks very well for the project moving forward.
Great. Sue?
Sure, just a quick question. What is the target date to have this particular phase done?
We expect that it'll be done over the course of summer, completed, so that, you know, well in time for any type of full report in the form.
Thank you.
I was impressed how well the presentation from BH&amp;A fit what we were looking for, and so it was a very well-drafted scope of works, that they clearly had been told what we wanted. I thought they responded that beautifully. I'm sure the other seven did also, but I thought it was a very, very We have the recommendation here from the Senior Center Evaluation Team, which was comprised of Jim Viera, Jill Irving Bishop, Marlene McCollum, Peter McConerty, and Sally Giffen. And there were actually, I think, seven proposals, or eight proposals, and they have narrowed it down to one. Jim, did you want to make any comments about this, or no? I mean, we have the information, we're good with your recommendation, and it's up for discussion by the board.
I did have a question for some of the rankings. I wasn't sure if that's appropriate for us to go to that level of detail on the way it was judged by the team. Is that an appropriate question?
For us, you mean?
Well, the team specifically, the group that's being recommended got a zero for qualifications. And I think this is particularly Mr. Viera. And I'm just, would love to clarify as to whether that was a reading of the spec that made that, or whether there was question in his mind on that candidate.
Hi, Jim Viera. Just to clarify, the way that the evaluation question was written, we were evaluating the project manager. So there was a little bit of confusion over if we were judging in that particular question the qualifications of the firm or the qualifications of the project manager that was designated in the proposal. And those are the kinds of things that the interview was intended to clarify, which we did. And we are all in agreement that this firm is very well-qualified, and that the principal of the firm will have enough input over the project manager so that we don't expect a big problem.
Thank you.
And the firm that's being recommended is BH plus A.
That's correct.
Any comments from the board?
I think I would just say that as I read this, there was an awful lot of work that was put into this, and a lot of time. And I think that when we talk about the Senior Center, we talk about the people that are involved in it. And I appreciate the time, and as I read, you tell that.
Thank you.
Heather?
Just make just one brief comment. One, I'd like to note that there were eight firms responding, and they were all responsive and responsible firms. This firm happened to be the most highly ranking and was very competent in the interview process. So it just speaks to the project. It speaks to the work that went into the scope of work, calling the site selection to the four sites that we're now looking at. And I think it just shows that there'll be a tremendous amount of interest, and it will be competitive when we get to the true design and construction phase. So that speaks very well for the project moving forward.
Great. Sue?
Sure. Just a quick question. What is the target date to have this particular phase done?
We expect that it'll be done over the course of summer, completed, so that, you know, well in time for any type of full report in the form.
Thank you.
I was impressed how well the presentation from BH and A fit what we were looking for. And so it's a very well-drafted scope of works, that they clearly have been told what we wanted, and I thought they responded that beautifully. I'm sure the other seven did also, but I thought it was a very, very impressive presentation that we have in our packet here.
And I think experience has told us over the years that when we put this much effort into really selecting a group, that we end up with a much more positive outcome. And I'm sure that as a result of this, we'll find that to be the case. All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the Senior Site Center Site Feasibility Study with BH and A.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now I'm going to deviate here during the administrative orders, because we have three wetlands hearings. And the first one, which the first was to begin at 7:25. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations and the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, March 2nd, 2015, at 7:25 p.m., rescheduled from February 9th, in the Selectment's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the application of 18 Willis Lane Nominee Trust, Kevin Clower trustee, for the proposed project to include the repair, reconstruction, and maintenance of the existing stone groin for 18 Willis Lane Nominee Trust in Vineyard Sound and located at 18 Willis Lane, East Falmouth. Very effective is Vineyard Sound. And for the applicant?
Joel Cubic with Holmes &amp; McGrath. As you said, this is at 18 Willis Lane, it's in East Falmouth. It's a single-family home. There is an existing riprap revetment and groin here, and there's riprap on either side, and several of the neighbors up along this portion of the coast. There's, it's kind of a loose-fit wall, and they'd like to clean it up. The neighbor to this side is, they've recently improved their wall, and the new owners of this property would like to do the same to make it a little more structurally sound. There's no change in the footprint. This recently was given an order of conditions by the Conservation Commission. It has an interim approval from the state, and as part of that, they have to go through the Chapter 91 process, which will be postponed. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I just have a comment about it. I think on our very first sheet is the fact that we needed to see the conservation harbor master and the shellfish, and we needed their reports, and I don't see that.
We do have a conservation commission, not the harbor master.
Yeah, we don't need harbor master or shellfish on this, because it's not a dock.
Right.
Oh, okay. All right, then.
Yeah, it's different, but we do have the other two.
Thank you. Okay.
I move approval contingent on meeting all of the standard and special conditions of the Conservation Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I think it's a pretty straightforward plan. I wanted to get down there and see it, but the roads were not all that good. And I decided I wouldn't risk it. But I think from the plan, it's pretty clear.
Good. What do you expect the access to be along that beach for the public?
As it is, like I said, there's no change in the footprint here. There are currently some wooden steps. They're going to replace them with set-in stone steps when they redo the riprap there. They're entitled to pass over there.
But to get over the groin, is that going to be something that is going to be climbable, or?
It's a fairly low groin, and it could be climbable.
So they're still staying within the water?
If at the state level they require that we put anything in, then we certainly would have to abide by that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Do you wish to make a motion?
Sure. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the repair, reconstruction, and maintenance of the existing groin.
Oh, wait a minute. Hold on. Sorry. I forgot, we've got a public hearing going here.
That's right.
Okay. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this plan? Is there anybody who would like to speak against it?
I move to close the hearing.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now we'll go back to our discussion. We've had questions. Are there any other questions of the applicant? No?
No.
Any other comments? It's a pretty straightforward plan.
I would now move to the approval of the repair, reconstruction, and maintenance of the existing groin in Vineyard Sound on 18 Willis Lane.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And you can sign this plan here dated December 23rd, 2014. Now we'll go back to item seven on administrative orders, to authorize the town manager to submit a grant request to the Cape Cod Collaborative for $75,000. This is a, the town is looking for this grant. It does not require a matching fund. It's for the Shellfish Propagation Demonstration Project in addition, additional monitoring wells for the groundwater characterization. The project and the dollar amount have been recommended by the Water Quality Management Committee, and the FINCOM has approved the grant request. And I also believe that the Water Protection Collaborative has already agreed that they would be willing to fund this. Becky, you're our representative there. Is that not the case?
Yeah.
Okay. So is there anybody here who would like to speak on this request? I didn't know if, I don't think Betsy's here. Oh, yes, she is here. Did you want to say anything about?
I don't know anything.
Oh, you don't know about the Water Collaborative?
She has the other one.
That's not, you have the other one.
She has number nine.
Okay. Any further questions on this motion, or would anybody care to make a motion to approve?
I would move to authorize the town manager to submit a grant request to the Cape Cod Collaborative for $75,000.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And number eight is to authorize the town manager to sign a 10-month contract with Science Wares for $49,500 from March 1st, 2015, to December 31st, 2015, with a possible one-year extension, subject to additional funding and issuance of a notice to proceed. And this is, any discussion?
Just to clarify, some of this money does go to our requirements for the in-kind donations to some of our grants. Is that true? Are there some monies that we need to put forward to be able to?
Yeah, great question. This particular funding is strictly for the consultant that serves the Water Quality Management Committee. We went through a second RFP process on this, having completed multiple, actually multiple years with the past process. And Science Wares is again recommended through the RFP process by the Water Quality Management Committee, so it would maintain the consistent consulting support to Water Quality Management Committee, and they've recommended this be affirmed through the end of the calendar year, a period of 10 months.
And Science Wares was the only one who responded to the request?
Was our existing consultant, and the committee's been very happy with them.
Correct.
She served us well.
Okay.
I would move to authorize the town manager to sign 10-month contract with Science Wares for $49,500 for the period from March 1st, 2015, to December 31st, 2015, with a possible one-year extension.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And then the final one is Betsy, to authorize the full proposal from the Falmouth Conservation Commission for dam removal and habitat restoration of the Coonamestert River. This proposal is due on March 27th, and our next meeting is on March 16th. So the goal really is to try to have this done earlier rather than later. And if there are any questions related to this grant request, Betsy Glutfelder is here, and she could answer them. Doug?
Are there any changes from what we received in October on this proposal that we should be aware of?
Hi, Betsy Glutfelder. Doug, there's only one change, and that the matching funds, we're going to reduce to $60,000. It's all sort of what various grant competitions want, and MET doesn't require any match, but if you don't have any match, you don't have any chance of getting the grant. However, any match that we use for MET can't be used for a subsequent grant, and we still would need to have one more grant to actually do the construction. And I've talked to Julian. There are two grant competitions coming up with NOAA for restoration work. And last Thursday, I talked to the NOAA, at the NOAA Restoration Center, which is in Rhode Island, and he made it clear that they would love to see a proposal from Falmouth, but they want big grants, and it should be part of a bundle. And Julian will remember that a couple, well, for the Sandy Grant, we also talked with the Planning Board, and I just talked to Brian, because it would really be nice to put those two grants together. And I know he's moving forward for a feasibility study for the, basically Little Pond Greenway. And if we could put those two together, it should come out in about two weeks, and we'll probably have about six weeks to get it together. But I think we could get, I think we could put a reasonable proposal together. So.
It's an excellent collaborative opportunity. My compliments to Betsy and all those involved.
Well, I remember you were here in October, when you talked about the pre-proposal.
I was. And we didn't, we actually didn't hear that we were invited to do this until beginning of last week.
Right.
And so it's a little bit of a rush. And the other little bit of a rush is that it takes a lot to put these proposals together, and I'm going to be away for 10 days, starting on the 18th. So I would like to have it ready to go. Julian's signature, your signature on a letter, so forth.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes.
I could just simply say that I've toured the site, thanks to Betsy, and it's a great project, and I'm more than happy to support this.
Good. Thanks. I hope we can all go out for ribbon cutting in the not-too-distant future.
Well, wasn't it recently that you took some of the selectmen on the tour of the Coonamestert River?
Yes, we did.
Before the snow.
Yeah, Rebecca and Sam.
Before the snow.
Well, before.
Yeah. It was a beautiful day. We actually took a long hike and really enjoyed it. And I would recommend it for anybody who hasn't been out there to see the thing.
Great. Okay, do we have a motion?
I would move to authorize a full proposal from the Falmouth Conservation Commission for dam removal and habitat restoration on the Coonamestert River.
Second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, MET, the acronym which was referred to, stands for the Massachusetts Environmental Trust, in case there's a question.
And actually, I'm just going to put one more. This is a little ad for MET. Anytime you receive money, and actually the plans that we have right now, the 75% plans that we're getting permits for, were supported by Massachusetts Environmental Trust, and they're supported through the sale of whale tail and trout license plates. So, just if you'd like to be part of it. I have to admit, I haven't changed my license.
So, a motion? Oh, we have a motion and a second, is that right? So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Great. Moving right along, our next hearing is an application to amend the underground fuel storage license for Cumberland Farms located at 212 T-Ticket Highway in Falmouth. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing to be held in the Selectment's Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Mass. on the application of Cumberland Farms, Inc. for permission to remove two 1,000-gallon tanks and install one 12,000-gallon tank for storage of gasoline to be located at 212 T-Ticket Highway and 10 Figurino Way, Falmouth, has been rescheduled to Monday, March 2nd, 2015, at 7:40 p.m. from February 9th, 2015. For the applicant, Mr. Almond.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I'm Bob Almond. I'm a Falmouth attorney, and I represent Cumberland Farms, Inc. Cumberland Farms is a convenience store, gas station operator, well-known to all of us. They have entered into a lease of 212 T-Ticket Highway, which is a former Sunoco station. It's, I don't think, been branded more recently, owned by the Frasacco family through an LLC. And the proposal is to tear down the existing building on the site while keeping the canopy for self-service gas and building a state-of-the-art convenience store. Because the Frasacco family acquired 10 Figurino Way, which is this portion of the property, it's a bigger site than existed before, the building will be farther back, the site works so much better, fuel trucks will be able to enter onto the site without interfering with other activity on the site. They won't have to back out onto Route 28, which they now do when they exit the site. They'll be able to travel around the back of the building and exit going forward onto the highway. So it's a much better layout, a very significant investment by Cumberland Farms. The application before the selectmen is simply to amend the existing fuel storage license. The pink indicates the existing two tanks. There are two small tanks that will be removed because the service station operations, that is repair of vehicles, is being eliminated. So two small tanks are not required. But they will be installing, with your permission, a new 12,000-gallon tank. There are a couple of purposes for them to do that. One is so that they won't have to have as frequent fuel deliveries, even though the truck will use the site better, keeping it away has benefits. And of course, they hope to sell more gas. With me tonight is Paul Wilson. He's the project manager from Cumberland Farms, so if there are any specific questions, he should be able to answer them. Permitting is also required through the Fire Department as a separate matter. The Planning Board and the Board of Appeals have already approved the reuse of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Question, Doug?
Well, I did notice that the new tank is a split tank for partial diesel and partial fuel, is that the gasoline? Is that going to also take care of the, is there a diesel tank there currently, or is that one of the $1,000, $1,000-gallon tanks?
One of the $1,000-gallon tanks, or the smaller tanks, are both fuel oil and waste oil tanks that are to service the fuel, the repair station, I should say. The split tank would be 4,000 gallons of diesel fuel, which I believe is currently offered at the site, as well as the premium unleaded fuel. The remainder of the tanks would be 24,000 gallons of the regular fuel. The blending of the tanks, the fuel actually happens at the dispensers to get the mid-grade. To answer the question, which I believe was?
Yes, where's diesel right now, if this is the only diesel tank that's?
I believe that there is a, there is actually, the existing tank has the split. It's not the proposed tank. The proposed tank is just a 12,000, I'm sorry, 12,000-gallon tank.
Becky?
I think you just made a statement that the Fire Department and their okay of this is a separate matter. Did you just say that?
No, I said that it would be. No, I said that the installer of tanks has permitting obligations with the fire department that are separate from your review.
Separate from our review? Okay. All right.
However, I do believe as part of your application, that the fire department did have to sign off on the...
But I didn't say...
We've not received that here, and that's one of our concerns, that we do not have a recommendation.
It isn't here, so that's what I was looking for.
We don't have that yet from the fire department.
The fire department, of course, was given an opportunity for referral to the planning board and the Board of Appeals. There wasn't any negative comment. We did inquire specifically of the fire department about filing, including, and sent them a copy of our application to the selectment. I suppose it's possible, because there are a number of fire safety officers who are currently on leave at this time, that they may be backed up, but they certainly have been aware of the project.
Do we find that as an issue? Well, we, I think we'd have to approve it with conditions. That, that we do have a note here where the fire department did receive a request to comment on this back in, on the 17th of February. But I think normally, well, they would normally do that, but we don't have it. So, I think from our, rather than delay it, we could approve it with the condition that the fire department approved it as well. I think we could do that. Would you not agree?
Yes.
Yeah? All right, Doug?
I also wanted to comment about how much work was put in, both by the applicant and the appeals board on this project, that it was a lot of suggestions to be made by the appeals board that the applicant did respond to, and really trying to be aware of what was happening in that area, how trash was going to stay in that area and the landscaping, and it was a really extensive process that they went through to have that happen.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because we did get the report from the appeals board, or their final decision, and it was a very thorough undertaking, no question. Becky?
I think when you had your public meeting, and the neighbors were discussing about what was going to happen, because it's coming further down the road toward their houses, and they were concerned, and I think you've agreed to put up a fence in the back so that they would not have the trash blowing all around, and I think they were thinking of some landscaping, and I thought it was good that the neighbors came and made the comments.
There's an existing fence along the back of the property, which is shown on the plan, and that will remain, along with substantial new landscaping throughout the site. There will not be a fence along Figurino Way, but rather, there's very substantial plantings that will be all along the way, and a new tree on that side. So, that's how the trash will be controlled by actual plants, as opposed to a fence, which we think aesthetically would be nicer.
I was pleased the neighbors were there to discuss that with you.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? It is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
I would move to close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Any further discussion from the board? Any further questions?
I would move approval of the application to amend the underground fuel storage license with the provision upon approval of the fire department's.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And this is for the plan dated...
Thank you.
Plan dated May 29th, 2014. Is that what you have?
Might we just confirm that with the town manager's office before it's written up? It's only submitted, of course.
You are right on topic. Yeah, we got it pretty well. Okay. Now, we have another public hearing. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations, the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, well, that was January 12th, it is now marked, it's been moved from January 12th to March 2nd. On the application of NINAS Marina Realty Trust, Melissa McKim trustee, for the proposed project, including the removal of a portion of the existence licensed timber bulkhead and boardwalk, the removal of licensed solid fill, the replacement, construction and maintenance of a timber vinyl sheet bulkhead, the repair reconstruction of an existing stone riprock, and proposed improvement dredging 300-plus CY in Falmouth Inner Harbor and located at 306 Granton Avenue, Falmouth. Area affected is Falmouth Inner Harbor. We have already held this hearing. We have had a discussion on it, but we didn't take a vote on it, because at the time, we did not have the comments from the harbor master or the shellfish warden. And we now have those comments. And Mr. McGrath, for the applicant, if you would like to make any comments?
Just to refresh everybody, I gave you copies, I hope you haven't, and what we're proposing to do is basically move a portion of the bulkhead back 12 feet, more or less. And one of the issues that was raised by the shellfish warden is, how would we address, I'm sorry, I should be talking into this, how would we address siltation? And on the front of the, of the main page, there's 22 steps that were described as construction methodology, and they were specifically designed to address siltation. But what I thought was good to show you is the construction technique, and I've given you a, basically, a sketch. And what we're proposing to do is to leave the old bulkhead in place. We're going to dig down behind it. As soon as we can dig down deep enough, we're going to reinforce the existing bulkhead with plywood, because right now, you can see through portions of it. And then, we're going to leave it in place, do the digging behind it, and that way, we'll minimize the threat of creating siltation. The construction methodology is 22 steps. I won't go in all of them, but for instance, it says dredging is prohibited from January 15th through May 31st to protect winter flounder. And then, it describes every one of the steps in order that we can get to this point, and includes the installation of a floating boom. So, I believe that the, the construction methodology that's described protects the waters of Falmouth Inner Harbor from any potential siltation. We agreed before, I think Selectman Jones wanted to make sure that the boats are still tied up alongside on the most lanyard face, as, as we agreed to before, and that's still the proposal. What'll happen is by bringing the boat in closer, there'll be less chance that it sort of rocks and rolls when some of the lodger craft from up in the harbor go by the ship. So, it's just going to give it more space. We are going to leave the corner piles in place, just to have tie-offs for the existing boat that's there. Are there any specific questions I could answer concerning this?
What's the advantage of a floating boom?
When we, the floating boom, what they do is they have, it keeps whatever siltation clouds, it keeps it on one side of the boom.
That's just during construction.
During construction.
Oh, just during construction. Oh, okay.
It's during construction, and basically, the, it would, the easiest way to describe it, just picture my jacket and this, and this material would go all the way to the bottom, it's held in place with weight, and this would be a float, styrofoam floats. So, it goes up and down with the tides, and it does move a little bit, but it is effective in retaining the clouds of siltation. So, I believe that we have tried to design a, an improvement here that we have made careful steps to protect the environment.
So, quick question, Mike. There was a question brought to us about public access, whether it was going to change and whether it could be improved.
Under Chapter 91, the, whenever you get a Chapter 91 license, they change your, the public's rights. The public's rights in Massachusetts go back to a law that was dated in 1647, and the public has the right to pass and repass between low water and high water. And what happens when you get a waterways license, they change that so that you end up with strolling rights. The bottom line is, this was all licensed a long time ago. In fact, I have the license, it's from 1915 or something like that. There was a subsequent one, but we have to go back and get a new license, and I don't know exactly what the rights will be, but I know the public has the right to pass and repass further to in this part, but we're not altering that part. So, did I answer your question?
Yeah, the answer is nothing. Thank you.
When we apply, there'll be negotiations about what we'll have to do. And most likely, believe me, there'll be, public access is like number two for Chapter 91, maybe number one.
Thank you. And since there's been, this is a continued public hearing, and there has been new information, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
I would move to close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Questions from the board? Comments from the board?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to know if each one of us have your artwork in our hands. Is this yours personally?
Yes.
Thank you. I've never been given, it's usually off a machine, and I looked at this, and I thought, well, each one of us have our own piece of artwork.
It's the first time my work's been called artwork.
Well, all right.
I'm an engineer. That's the opposite of an artist.
Sam?
I might say that this came before the Conservation Commission, and they stipulated their restrictions and conditions, both standard and in special, and they approved it as well.
I guess a few comments I'd make. One is, our decision still has to be continued upon our findings, not the con common, so it always has to be a separate finding.
Yep.
I find that the, this new bulkhead will improve the current one and replace it, and will also increase the actual width of the harbor by the dredging that the private group is doing, and moving the bulkhead in will be better for their boats, but I think also better for the general public, because it'll be increasing the width of the harbor way. So, for that reason...
I think that was the harbor master's comment, too, decided it will really increase the land under the water in the harbor.
For that reason, I would move approval of the proposed bulkhead and dredging at NINAS Marine Realty Trust, 306 Granton Avenue.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And this is the plan dated September 23rd, 2014, and we are signing. Is that right?
There was a revision, the harbor master asked us to add some dimensions. October 22nd, it's just a couple of dimensions.
Only one way to do this, is just to unplug it. I think this is all one plan.
It's just on the front page, really show a dimension between the new bulkhead and the harbor line of 43 feet.
Can we take one of yours and sign it then?
Sure. I can have any of yours if you want.
Yes, no, this is good, because this says the date of 10...
I better sign it in the original, because it's not, I don't have a standboard in there. Can I borrow your group pen?
You can. Just change that.
Sorry about that.
So, the plan revised, October 22nd, 2014.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mike. early. We're going to discuss and vote some new recommendations for voting locations. Michael, you're still here. Did you want to present this, Mike, since you did so much work on it?
Just summarize what has taken place since the last election. There was some concern of Mike Palmer on the town floor. After the last election in November, there was some concerns about voting at the high school and the congestion that was taking place. A forum was put together by David Vera and Bill Huff at the library, where the community came together, and their concerns were to bring back voting in precincts, to bring back a sense of community was one of their concerns, and the other one of the concerns was safety of the children in the elementary schools. From that forum, a task force was put together, we met, and came up with recommendations. One of the recommendations was trying to move precincts out of the high school to different locations, and we recommended that we move precinct three and four to St. Anthony's Church Hall, and precinct nine to the Jewish Community Center. Task force met again at the St. Anthony's Hall, really was determined that we couldn't configure the room to accommodate two precincts, four being centrally located around St. Anthony's. We decided to recommend that we move precinct four to St. Anthony's. There was some discussion about moving precinct three to the Gus Canty Center, but it was felt that the high school, even though there were some concerns, if we moved two precincts out of the high school, it would be a better location and add less confusion than moving precinct three to a different location. It would be the Gus Canty Center, which there's a congestion problem right at that entrance to the police station in the Gus Canty Center. So, the recommendations of the task force, in the end, a brief summary, was that we moved from the high school, precinct nine to the Jewish Community Center on Sandwich Road, precinct four to the lodge at St. Anthony's Church, and precinct six and precinct three remain at, remain at the high school. That basically sums it up. There are a couple of members of the task force here, I don't know if they want to, Barbara or Peter.
Barbara Schneider, Captain, precinct four. I just want to speak to the process. We had very animated discussions about this. There was a lot of desire to try to let people vote as close to home as possible, and to have that feeling that you were voting in your own precinct, if at all possible. We stood, we stood in the lodge for a long time and really tried to configure, we pushed furniture around, we had great arguments about this, but in the end, I think we all walked away feeling we had given it our very best shot, and it really was only going to work for one precinct to move. to move there, as much as it would have been nice to put three and four both there. So I'm here to support the process and the group that worked hard on this to bring the best possible solution without having the schools involved, and I think we did that.
Mark Fetteren, precinct six. This all came about as a result to a town meeting article that I passed in the fall. Initially, when we had the forum at the library, Bonnie Gifford told us that she had intelligence that we didn't have. I don't really think that was the right choice of words, but I just found out this weekend from someone connected to the school committee that the original complaint from T-Ticket School is about six years old, and their complaints were never addressed, and I was unaware, as I'm sure most people in town were unaware, that actually was an issue. I think that this could have been dealt with easier and earlier just by dealing with precincts three, and we could have put them in St. Anthony's, and then the whole thing might have been even better than what we came up with. But certainly in the end, this is a lot better than what was transpiring at the high school, which was completely unacceptable. Thanks.
Just one more comment from Jane Perry, who was also part of the task force, wasn't able to be here. She's the Commission on Disabilities Chairwoman. I wanted her to be involved just to make sure that we're in compliance with all the requirements that we needed to be, and she confers that both locations do meet the requirements of being handicap accessible.
Okay, Doug?
I also want to comment that there was a very strong statement by the school department how willing they were to make arrangements to make the parking situation, even if it is just two precincts, even better than it's ever been, that they were willing to move the teachers' parking around to really try to be as supportive as they could of parking up at the high school.
I'm still looking for their cooperation in that area because that was one of the main concerns, is that the parking in front of the building wasn't adequate, and there could have been, things could have been done to make it better, and I'm looking for their cooperation on that, and they've agreed to cooperate.
Betsy?
Hi, Betsy Glotfelder. I just have a comment about the parking. I'm glad I'm in precinct six, that we voted at the high school, because now we vote in our own precinct, but the, maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought that the traffic circulation in the high school was supposed to be, as you go down Gifford, you go past the out and then you take a left into the in. Should be a one-way circle. And both, the last time I voted, and also when I went to visit to the high school basketball games, playoff games, there are a lot of people who were zooming in the out direction. So I think maybe even if you just had a policeman that told people they couldn't come in the one-way, it would help a lot.
Well, we're looking forward to seeing some significant improvements in the parking situation at the next election.
Yeah, that was a concern. There were parking issues. Policemen, to put a detail out there, we did have a detail in the parking lot to be the more efficient to work in the parking lot, maybe a consideration. There was a cost to that, so, and every time you add a detail, you're adding dollars per hour of details that are out there. So I do try to watch out for the town's money, and that's the request of the town, certainly move forward with more detail.
Well, with half the number of voters, too, it should make it a lot easier. I mean, there's two fewer precincts.
Correct. I think removing two precincts from there is going to remove, and really, you're only looking at the, every other November elections when we get the high turnout that made the major congestion there. When you get 65 and then the presidential 80% turnout, that's when you're going to have a lot of congestion. During the presidential, I believe the schools are closed, so that wouldn't be a problem to it, but it should be every other fourth year in November, you'd have that large amount of traffic congestion there. But moving two of the precincts out of there should alleviate that, but a point well taken to get the flow of the traffic through there correctly.
I would move that we accept the recommendation of the task force and move precinct four to St. Anthony's, move precinct nine to the Jewish Community Center, and precinct three and six to vote at the high school. All other precincts staying where they have been.
Second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, could I make one comment if I may? I just wanted to thank, personally thank town clerk Michael Palmer for his extraordinary work in finding a collaborative way to bring this process to closure, and I tip my hat to him. I know it represents a lot of behind-the-scenes work and patience and dedication with many people, so thank you for that, Michael.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Michael, very much. And the task force, it was very spirited, and I happen to be there, so I know how spirited it was, yep.
Yeah, I think we're thorough. We looked at all the possibilities, and I think this is the best solution to the situation.
Did I cover the vote?
Not yet.
No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to move on to our interviews with candidates for the Board of Governors for the Steamship Authority, and we have four candidates, and I see they are all here this evening. And I want to thank each of you very, very much for the time that you've spent in providing us with the information we requested, responding to our questions in writing that we sent you, and just generally for even being willing to be considered as a candidate for this position. As a board, we consider this appointment a very, very important appointment for the town, because as we all know, the Steamship Authority has a major impact on this community, in many positive ways and in many ways that cause a little bit of distress sometimes here and there. But it's a very important appointment. It's one of five, I think, on the board, and so we're very glad that you showed interest and actually are here tonight to be interviewed.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can I just announce that I actually worked under Eric Aysendorf for two years. That was 14 years ago, and we parted amicably. I don't believe that I hold any prejudice for or against Mr. Aysendorf.
Okay, very good. All right, so I'm going to take them in the order in which they're in my pile, so that is very objective. And the first is Eric Aysendorf. And I know we asked each of you to respond to some questions, which you did in writing, but I would ask you maybe to consider your responses in your comments to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I'm trying to think of what I can tell you that I haven't told you before.
Right.
And would you like to do a brief history? Would you like to answer me some questions?
It's up to you. You tell us what you think is important for us to know or be reminded of so that we keep your candidacy and all of your virtues and all your good points in front of us as we consider.
Your points about it being an important part of Falmouth and the community is something I take to heart. Think, in fact, I'm trying to find out between, somewhere between 15 and 18 years, one, what was previously the Financial Advisory Board was an elected position, then after the most recent legislative change early in the century, that Financial Advisory Board came to be the Port Council. And the Port Council is an advisory board to the Board of Governors of the Steamship Authority, and on that board, there are two members from the Vineyard, one from the two port towns on the Vineyard, one from Nantucket, one from Fall River, because that's where the significant maintenance facility is now, one from New Bedford, one from Hyannis and Falmouth. That board is not a voting board. It is a sounding board for Steamship Authority management and community input, where we can take on those issues and help to advise the Board of Governors as to the way we should proceed, we think we should proceed. One of the things that also came out of that legislation was the fact that the significance of the Falmouth vote is somewhat limited. Having a working relationship with the existing Board of Governors from previous experience and having been intimately connected with the authority, you know, Falmouth has a 10% vote. That's all we have. So in order to get things done that Falmouth wants, you really need to have a working relationship and be able to explain what we need as well as listening to what they need, because it's a constant give-and-take. It's a compromise. It's just like everything else. Job one, the Steamship Authority, is safety. I mean, we're transporting hundreds of thousands of people at sea every year in many different various weather conditions, different types of vessels, in numerous ports, with a lot of also automobile and bus traffic, not to mention all the truck traffic, because we are responsible, unlike the Island Queen or the other steamship or the other ferry system in Hyannis, we're responsible for the lifeline of the islands. We're responsible for all of the freight. Nobody else moves freight except, with the possible exception of Mr. Packer, who does run some barges and fuel to Martha's Vineyard. So, the, to get back to the point, that safety is the number-one job. The number-two job is really making an economically viable organization. It's a $100 million a year business. And if it were to falter or fall short of its stated economic or of being able to cover its costs by way of making bad investment decisions, by making poor management decisions, by changing things too quickly, however it might happen, the taxpayers of Falmouth are on the hook for that. So that's a pretty important, I mean, this is an important business. It is important to keep this very fiscally responsible. I'm a businessman. I'm not the world's greatest politician. I'm not a very good politician. I'm a little bit too straightforward. But from a business point of view, I understand it. I live it, and I'm very interested in participating once again in representing the town of Falmouth. And if there's any other questions that you would like, or anything, just an overall idea. Doug?
Doug?
The question I have is, the lease for the Woods Hole parking lot comes up with the Steamship Authority this year. What should we ask for?
Okay, I got the Woods Hole parking lot, but how, in what light?
The town of Falmouth owns the lot that the long-term vineyards park in.
Okay.
The lease that we have with the Steamship Authority. It is sort of the only playing card we hold in the Steamship Authority.
It is.
Because as I was saying, they are the lifeline. They can tell us what they need to do. We have that one card. How should we play it?
I'm not going to tell you how to play it. I'm going to tell you what we can do, what I know. As I say, I've been out of the loop for a few months. Okay, so I don't know what's really going on other than pieces I clean from here and there, but I do know that there can be some negotiation with the town, over the town, maybe in the process of creating a new port of entry there, that some of that space could be made available to the town. Keep in mind, I'm not sitting on the Steamship Authority saying that, but it's something I would certainly like to see them do. The administrative offices are going to move out of Woods Hole. The maintenance facility that's still there is going to leave Woods Hole. Woods Hole will become a ticket office, not unlike any of the other ticket offices that the Steamship Authority operates. So we're going to eliminate traffic and congestion just from the coming and going of all the maintenance people and the administrative people. If you've ever been down to the Woods Hole terminal, the administrative offices are packed upstairs. They're in some of the smallest, I mean, their people are body to body up there. They have been for a long time. Every other port in the system has been totally rehabilitated with beautiful facilities, with the exception of the cinder block down at Woods Hole. I know that the Steamship Authority and the Board of Governors really wants, I know they want to do the right thing. I know that we're going to have disagreements, and somewhere along the way, there's going to have to be a compromise. It's going to be education, and it's going to be, you know, they'll reach out and say, you know, parking spaces, maybe something can be done there. There's other things that I hope to be able to be done relative to traffic moving and, you know, just easing some of the congestion and making it safer than it is right now, because the fact that no one, or recent memory to me, where you have buses and cars going between parking lots and ticket offices constantly, that there haven't been any accidents and issues down there, with that in mind.
Becky?
I just heard an interesting sentence, that the Steamship Authority budget has always been in the black. It's all, it has never had a deficit.
That's because they've run it fairly well.
Okay, so now we take that idea and we think about they're going to increase the fares. And there was quite a petition that was presented to the Steamship Authority at their last meeting, and they had hundreds and hundreds of names, and I thought they were well organized and they presented themselves well. Do you think that somewhere between always having your budget, that you, having your budget as they have maintained it for years, that there could be some assistance given to the people who are buying tickets and on a continuous basis? I thought about the fact that it was always in the black, and then people are, they're increasing the fares, and it's more difficult for people, that they use the fairies and depend on them. So I'm looking at the two of those and thinking there could be another solution. Keep it in the black, but don't raise the fares.
Well, first of all, you would never want it not to be in the black. Let's start there.
Absolutely.
All right. And I would liken the fares schedule of the Steamship Authority to the rules of baseball. They have made, they have bent over backwards to accommodate every special interest group, every group. They have special fares for residents of the Vineyard. They have special car fares for residents of the Vineyard. They have special traveling fares. They have special fares for students, and they do a lot to accommodate anyone in need. People with an emergency, without a reservation, they'll get them on the boat. They dearly do do. The problem is, is that people aren't aware of that, and maybe that's something the Steamship Authority could possibly do better, is communicate that to the public. But the fact is, is that they didn't just decide to raise fares for no reason at all. I haven't been there, sitting at the meetings lately, so I don't know the actual economics of it. It also happened at exactly the same time that oil prices fell. Oil prices are a significant expense for the Steamship Authority, but only about somewhere between 10 and 15% of the budget, I think closer to 10. They do a good job of hedging their energy risk through different programs. So, I know that they didn't go with that because they just want to grab more money from the public, but I couldn't, I could not stand here tonight and tell you why they made that increase.
I hope the people that are concerned about the fares being increased heard what you were saying.
They, and they, yeah, and I hope they did, too. And believe me, they were heard by the Board of Governors and the Port Council and everybody at the meetings, including the help from our local media outlets. including the help from our local media outlets.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
I have a, well, I have a question. A lot is made of the fact that Falmouth only has 10% of the vote. Falmouth has never had part of the majority, even when there are only three members on the Authority, on the Board, Falmouth never had a majority vote and never will.
Of course not.
The Vineyard and Nantucket will always have the majority. So,
Assuming that you agree.
The 10% doesn't really, doesn't really matter. But what really matters is that for the individual who represents Falmouth on that Board is to be persuasive. So, my question to you is, how do you persuade others to your point of view?
I'm a professional salesman. Have been for the last 40 years. Prior to that, I taught sixth grade for 10 years in this town. I sold demo education. So, I mean, I have some capacity to persuade. Given the opportunity, I'm relatively good at it. You know, and I, not ever having been in that position before where I was really on the front line, I look forward to that responsibility and I'll take it very seriously. I want this to be as close to a win-win situation as we can get in particularly in the town of Falmouth. I took it so to heart that I moved to Precinct 1 last year. That was a joke.
That was a joke.
But I actually did move to Precinct 1 last year.
And then, and then my follow-up would be, over the years, we know that there are more cars that park now in Falmouth who go to the vineyard than ever before. I mean, you just take a look at the Palmer Avenue parking lot and we know that there are far more parking spaces there than there were 10 years ago. And now they're building the parking lot out on Thomas Sanders Road and, but in the interim, they're, they created two parking lots on Gifford Street and they've used the high school and other places in town. So, I guess my question is, at what point does Falmouth begin to feel that they're saturated with cars of, that represent people who are going to the vineyard? Is there a tipping point? And what would be your sense of when to draw the line if in fact that should ever happen?
The tipping point, I think, came about 15 years ago, when vineyard traffic peaked. And it really has been reasonably fat, given flat, given the economic cycles that we've gone through since then. Meanwhile, it seems that there are more people here than ever before. And yes, they're running a parking lot up in Gatamet. There's 21 Gifford Street. There's a high school. And those all get filled on, particularly with the recovering economy, on the big weekends. Moving a lot of the traffic out of Woods Hole, a lot of the parking out of Woods Hole will move a lot of vineyard, vineyard people have stopped taking their car back and forth due to the expense. And those that do travel often have a car here and a car there. It's a better economic deal for them. So, that long-term parking is an issue for the Authority. A good portion, most all of Woods Hole is long-term parking and a good portion of Gifford Street is. Okay? That being said, the combination of working a win-win situation with the ice arena and doing the land swap up there, with that's, the, the outcome of this will be a huge positive to this town, I think. But it's like, one of those things, it's like somebody quitting smoking, as if they gave it up, it's not a nuisance anymore. It's only when they did it was a nuisance, right? So, now you've got a situation where you're going to close the Gatamet lot and have those buses running up and down the highway. You're going to close the Gifford Street lot, the 2 Gifford Street lot, the, the high school situation and not have any buses coming up and down Gifford Street. Jones Road, Catherine LeBeke's gone. The only buses that will run will have a destination of either Palmer Avenue or Thomas Sanders. There won't be any other parking lots. So, there will be a lot less buses necessary, a lot less empty buses running around. We'll be able to schedule better, be able to manage that traffic better. And all of that traffic will not, with proper signage and education, will stop all that vineyard traffic at Thomas Sanders Road exit as opposed to bringing them into Falmouth, even to Palmer Avenue or Woods Hole.
Anybody else have a question?
Thank you very much, Eric.
Good.
Appreciate it. Next is Joe Martina. Welcome, Joe.
Madam Chairman, Board of Selectmen, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Joseph C. Martina and I am applying for the Falmouth Representative to the Steamship Authority Board of Governors. Further, if you wish, I would like to expand on the information requested on my application and also on the answers to the questions that I received from our Town Manager, Mr. Julian Suso. And I would just like to know-
Excuse me, Joe, could you speak just a little louder, maybe?
Sure.
And the microphone won't help because that's, that's just for TV.
Oh, okay. On the questionnaire, I'd just like to point out several things. One of the items on the first three most important actions facing the Steamship Authority Board of Governors in the coming year are an aging fleet of ships and facilities, a financial plan that must be kept current and up to date to cover the future costs of operating the Steamship Authority without unduly burdening the towns and the uses of the Steamship Authority. The increase in traffic on the island towns as well as the mainland towns, while a challenge, must be considered and planned for. My employment and experience at Falmouth Hospital is similar to the Steamship Authority because the hospital must operate under very stringent regulations to ensure the safety, security, and well-being of patients, staff, and visitors. The Steamship Authority must operate under similar regulations because it carries passengers, crew, and cargo over quite often turbulent seas. Safety for both organizations is paramount. As the Vice President of Support Services at Falmouth Hospital and a mechanical engineer by profession, I worked well with the hospital Board of Directors, the hospital staff, architects, engineers, and contractors. I also represented the hospital with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and Safety, the Cape Cod Commission, the Falmouth Building Department, and Falmouth Fire Department. I worked, I worked with all of the above to obtain permits and ensure patient safety. And as far as my application, that gives all my experiences. One of the things that I'm proud of is that I served on a town finance committee for 12 years, eight of which as chairman, which I found out later was a record. The Steamship Authority Board of Governors can best reflect the thinking of the Falmouth community by continuing to keep the lines of communication open regarding present and future plans. This communication must take place in a positive and open environment in which all parties are heard. And I'd like to refer to a letter that I received from a Mr. Thomas Clements, who was a member of the Board of Trustees at Falmouth Hospital. And I might say during his tenure on the Board of Trustees, he was selected when Bangladesh was in crisis to be the person to go over there for the UN. And let me just read, read the part. "I have known Mr. Martina for over 10 years in connection with my work as a trustee of the Falmouth Hospital. As chairman of its long-range planning committee, I have been in constant contact with Mr. Martina in planning and executing the hospital's $3 million expansion program in 1978 and has just recently completed the expansion of $15 million." In both instances, Mr. Martina's chief engineer executes extensive and careful planning, taking into account growth needs in a Falmouth area and the present state of medical technology so as to assure that the facilities developed would be compatible with healthcare needs of the future. Throughout the period I have known him, he has maintained a friendly relationship with those who work with him, including the medical staff and the rest of the administrative staff. He is persuasive in a friendly and cooperative manner, never demonstrating intolerance with those who may disagree with him, but with a gentle and knowledgeable presentation of the problems involved and solutions proposed, convinces those that might have opposed his decisions. And I am very pleased to learn that he will take up his studies once more and can ensure that Leslie College will experience the same reactions I encountered while working with him. And I did graduate with a master's degree there. If you have any other questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Well, before I ask the board, I have to comment on the picture that you provided in your packet of the EDIC.
Right.
How many years ago, Joe?
Few years ago.
Joe and I were on the EDIC together many years ago. Yeah. An outdoor picture. That was great.
In the wintertime.
In the wintertime, right. With our desk. Great. Okay, Doug, you can start.
So, I'll start with my same question. In our renegotiating the lease with the Steamship Authority over the parking area, what should we ask for? What do you think we can try to get in exchange for the lease that we give them of the land?
Well, if you recall, a while back, I was on a town finance committee when we took over the railroad. And we did have a battle with some gentlemen, but we won in the end. We lost a few dollars, but we have some income coming from that. And I think by having that leverage, I think I would be able to negotiate something that would benefit not only the Steamship Authority, but also the town of Falmouth. And I'm not going to speculate on anything, but it doesn't take me long to find out the mechanics of the Steamship Authority. Because I have a good financial background, certainly in the town of Falmouth and, as I say, the hospital. And I'm sure that I will learn very quickly when I'm on the Steamship Authority Board of Governors.
Becky?
You've seen the, the plans for the new terminal to be constructed in Woods Hole. What are your thoughts about it? Do you think it is outlandish? Do you think it should be, it should be a smaller building? Does it need to have as much as they are showing on all of their plans? What's your thought about that?
Well, I think those are all good points that you point out. But I would rather be there and go over everything and find out why they're doing certain things before coming up with any solutions to that. I think I can be very persuasive. I'm a good listener. I'm a team player. And I think they would learn that very quickly. With my engineering background, I can very quickly see flaws in something. And my idea of anything is really, planning is the most important thing and you have to have a goal and you have to keep striving for. And I've always said, sometimes you have to lose a few barrels in order to win the war.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, Joe, I'm going to ask about what I asked our previous candidate. And that has to do with the whole idea of the 10%. You know, how people get sort of very concerned that Falmouth only has a weighted vote of 10%. But as I said earlier, we will never have the majority. So, whether it's 10% or 48%, it doesn't really matter because we'll never have the majority. But the, so the question is, and you have spent time on the finance committee, certainly on, on the, with working at Falmouth Hospital, how do you persuade others to your point of view? If you're going to represent Falmouth, and we know that many of the votes that are going to be coming up over the next two years are going to be votes relating to Falmouth because of the terminal.
Right.
And so, it's going to be very important that Falmouth has, that Falmouth can be persuasive. And so, I, so my question is, how do you persuade others to your point of view?
Well, I think, again, with my engineering background, I could look at their plans. And I have to go in much more detail than what I saw to date. And by going over that with their architects and engineers, and I've certainly been used to working with contractors. And my idea of contractors is they should make a profit, not too much, but, but to put the best people in to work on that. And I think that even though we only have a 10% edge, I think by working with them and as Mr. Clements points out, I can be very persuasive.
Yes, you did say that, didn't you? And you can be, because I've worked with you, so I do know that.
Right.
So, my other question too has to do with the parking. We know over the years that the number of parking, the number of cars being parked in Falmouth has increased considerably. And I guess my question is, how do we know when it's reached a tipping point, when we really have to say, no more cars?
Well, I, I think that's a very good point because I certainly have been thinking about that. And we're not the only ones that are really concerned with the traffic. The towns in Martha's Vineyard are too. And it has to be some limits to it. And I think that the Steamship, Steamship Authority right now is really at the point where they're advertising for more and more people to go back and forth. And what's happening to them is, once they get to that point, what can happen is they will become not competitive. Right now, I think they're competitive in Hyannis and they're competitive in Falmouth. But if they get to the point where they're so big and people don't want to go anymore because the traffic is so bad, that they have to realize and take their plans and cut them back, really.
Anybody else have a question?
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jim Morse.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James Morse. I've recently moved to West Falmouth about a year ago. I live in Precinct 6, 545 West Falmouth Highway. I'm a commuter to Martha's Vineyard on a daily basis. I, I'm still employed as a police detective at the Oaklaws Police Department. When I'm not enforcing the law, I practice here in Falmouth. I have a law practice over on the Homeport Complex. As you can see from my resume, my, the answers that I submitted to the Board, I bring a combination of 22 years of real-life experience as a police officer, as a union negotiator, public service. I've been involved in town government, various communities I've lived in. I've served on the Tisbury Bureau and Wine Advisory Board when I was living in the Village of Vineyard Haven. I've served as a volunteer fireman and EMT. I'm hoping this can be my entry in forte into service of the town of Falmouth. By way of my background, my family has owned a home in Woods Hole for over 80 years. Because I've been working on the vineyard for 22 years, I have seen, unfortunately, when that traffic, I think, hit that beyond tipping point critical mass when cars were backed up and it was equally bad over on Martha's Vineyard. You can see from my resume, I believe I got the requisite skills, education, and life experience to be a strong advocate. I've been an advocate as a union representative, as an attorney my entire working career. I have an excellent working relationship currently with the Martha's Vineyard Representative, the Steamship Authority, Mark Hanover. He owns a coffee shop in the town of Oaklaws. I've known him my entire working career. I'm on a first-name basis with him. So, in terms of the relationship piece and ensuring that Falmouth is adequately represented or that we have a ability to communicate the needs of the town of Falmouth, I think that's a valuable insight. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Doug?
Bargaining point for the parking lot?
Nah.
That's like walking a tightrope coming to that issue. I think that certainly the town of Falmouth has to ask for fair market value or increase to offset the simple fact that this traffic does have a negative impact on the community. I think the easy thing to do, as I've heard from several comments, double or triple the lease price. The problem with that is, I think that that could ultimately impact the number of cars parking in a bad way to the point that now the budget could possibly be compromised. Or that coming here is going to become so expensive if people are now instead of paying $16 a calendar day, I park in Woods Hole, my family's house, if suddenly that rate is now $25 to $30 a calendar day, people may stop coming. People stop coming, total budget- People stop coming, total budget to increase, it spirals out of control in a negative way. My suggestion would be to find something above market rate, but not extortion rate.
Becky?
I'll ask your opinion about the terminal that is being built, and whether it is too much, or it should be just sufficient for the needs. What do you, have you, you've looked at the plans?
I have seen the plans, and I think the Board of Governors did a commendable job getting through a rather contentious issue. And I believe that they've scaled back the size, they're moving the administrative offices out. I think they were very sympathetic and empathetic to the concerns of Woods Hole Village residents, that it was going to block nice views, or it was going to be rather imposing. I think that the design that they've had is addressing a lot of the historical gripes coming out of Woods Hole, sound of trucks backing up, views being blocked, and so on. I think that they're, they've come up with a design that's going to need the functional needs of the Steamship Authority for at least the next 25 or 30 years. I think they've done a nice job with the building developments, for the most part. This is a very contentious issue when they were redoing the Oak Bluffs Terminal. The end product there was rather nice. It was the same issues in Vineyard Haven. The end product there has been fairly successful, and I think has been positively received. So I believe that the, the plan that has now been in place and adopted by the Board of Governors is one that I think that the community is going to be happy with, and will meet the function needs of the Steamship.
What do you think about raising the fares?
That affects me on a daily basis, going back and forth four times a week. And I had a long discussion with Mark Hanover, the Vineyard Rep, about that. The decision-making behind it, I think, was sound. There are still programs for daily commuters to buy discounted ticket books, 46-book, which instead of paying slightly under 50% discount, residents of the island can still buy 10-passenger books. I think that if, if the compromise position that the Steamship could have taken was to either continue those, well, to further discount or not raise rates on those. In terms of general day-to-day ticket prices, I think not giving a discount was the right move, given that there's, I think, $60 million in capital improvements coming down the pike with the Steamship replacing vessels and improving terminal upgrades. I think it was the right move to do. I realized that the compelling reason for the argument was that fuel prices have dipped considerably. Oil was at $110 a barrel a year ago, significantly less now. The Steamship employs an actuary that averages out the cost of petroleum, and they're basing their decision-making generally, I believe, on $70 a barrel or below that, but we don't know what's going to happen. And to be getting into highly speculative budgets, I think, is a very dangerous line to cross.
Do you mind if I just ask? In looking at your resume, you really have accomplished a lot, and as I was reading it, the different degrees that you have obtained, when was your training for being a policeman, and then all of the different police work that you did, and detective?
It was twofold. I started my law enforcement career in Martha's Vineyard when I was 19, as, yes, I know, as a reserve police officer in 1995, and that was the, the first half of my police training. I went to the full-time police academy December of 1997 through April of 1998. I received my bachelor's degree in 97. Worked my way through, which Julie's going to go to law school right after undergrad. Some family things happened, so I worked my way through grad school. We had the Quinn Bill at the time, used that money to pay myself, worked my way through law school.
Thank you. That was just in looking at that. Thank you.
Well, I am going to ask you the same question about how you persuade others to your point of view. I also think I want to throw in that, the very, a different situation in which you find yourself is being one who is employed on the Vineyard, and who knows a lot of people on the Vineyard, and yet you're a resident of Falmouth, and you're really, if you were appointed, you would be there to really represent Falmouth and not the Vineyard. So I guess my question is, how do you persuade others to your point of view, and the fact that you were really there representing Falmouth and not the Vineyard?
First and foremost, is, I would recognize, I am the town of, or if appointed, I would be the town of Falmouth's advocate. That's a position, or that's a responsibility I take very seriously, and know the importance of as an attorney, that sometimes advocating, that you have to advocate for your client. In this case, the town of Falmouth is going to be the client. I think that that actually would be somewhat valuable, only that I have a lot of personal relationships with the stakeholders. I know several of the Port Council members in the Vineyard. I know the selectmen in the town of Oak Bluffs and Vineyard Haven fairly well. I think that's ultimately would be an asset, only that it would allow me to advocate a little, having these personal relationships, knowing the politicians and decision-makers and stakeholders, as I do, and it would make me a more effective advocate for the town of Falmouth's position. At the end of the day, this is home.
Actually, there's something to clarify, and I know we talked about it the last time in the interview we did last year. Actually, the position is to serve us. It isn't even the town of Falmouth.
Well, it's the Board of Selectmen.
And one of the questions to be considering for all the applicants is to how you make sure you actually know what the Board of Selectmen is interested in, in, as you're thinking about your job, that it is not, oh, what do I think? It really has to be representing what the Board of Selectmen.
Of course. And that just comes with open communication and dialogue, making sure that I keep the fingers on the pulse of, or the will of the Board of Selectmen, recognizing this is an appointed position, and it's a simple vote, and you're not, no longer appointed.
That's true. The Selectmen being the appointing authority, that's true. And my other question has to do with parking. It's very obvious that we are parking more cars here, and we're getting numbers on those now, because we're going to be negotiating, obviously very soon, with the Steamship Authority on the land, the parking, the land that we owned out in Woods Hole, on which they have been parking for years. It's a 10-year lease that is now up for renewal. But we're very much aware of the number of cars that are parked here, and what that means. And I guess, at what point does, do we get to a tipping point, in terms of the fact that we just really can't provide space for any more cars? And what is your sense of parking in Falmouth? I know you, you have to park yourself to go back and forth.
I absolutely agree that there is a tipping point. I would like to see, before I could give a definitive answer, a little more data in terms of, I certainly can remember circa 1997, 1998, the days of guaranteed standby, when that was just simply not sustainable. With the restructuring and realignment of the parking lots, I would like to see exactly, I know they keep count, I'd like to see some little bit of data in terms of what's coming in, what's going out, how many of the vehicles in the lots are owned by daily commuters and/or permit holders, people who live on the island who are, keep a second car. I think we're, we're getting very close to that tipping point, though, or sooner or later, we're going to have to come up with some, something to say, enough, enough is enough. I don't know if that's going to be by having the Steamship simply charge significantly higher amounts for parking, overnight parking, or for annual permits, but I think we're close. I would like to see a little more data to make a more informed decision about when we've hit that tipping point, and when we need to start cutting back.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. And next is Betsy Glafford. Welcome, Betsy.
Good evening, again. Good evening. I feel like I've heard the answer to all these questions three times now. But I think I'll start off, you've all known me, and one of the question, let's, let me start off with your question, Pat, is how would I work with people, persuade people? And I think, I don't think there's anybody here who knows me who wouldn't say, well, Betsy talks a lot. And Betsy talks to a lot of people. But many of you probably would also say that I listen to people, and I try to see what their issues are. And to give you an example, I talked to somebody from Nantucket the other day, who knows the Nantucket Rep, who said the Nantucket Rep was complaining about Woods Hole wanting to know, wanting to, not liking the first design. And, and this person said, well, of course, they're going to be concerned with what happens. This is a little village, it's going to be a change, you know, they want something consistent with the, you know, the idea of the sense of the village right now. And so I started thinking about that. And the, the meetings actually are once a month, and they're in all the different places in Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, there's one in, there's Barnstable, there's one in New Bedford. But the only meetings in Woods Hole are November, December, January, and March. And so one of the things I would suggest right away is that one of the meetings of the Board of Governors is in the middle of the summer, so that people can really, I really believe in field trips, and you really should sense what some of the issues are. And perhaps we could invite them to a really early breakfast, so that they can hear the trucks, and the jake brakes, and so forth. So, so that's the answer in your question. As far as, I'll get to Doug's question, as far as Doug's question, I've thought about that, and I, I do have an opinion, subject to how the Board of Selectmen feels. But there aren't very many parking places in Woods Hole. And I think some of those parking places should be used for public parking for Woods Hole. And how you negotiate it, it is, it is going to be difficult to figure out. I, I believe in, and this is one of the things I wrote in this, but, but in caring capacity. How big do you want to go? It is easy, you know, in an organization, to get bigger and bigger and bigger, and then have resources that all of a sudden nobody wants, but you still have expenses to go with it. So from Falmouth's point of view, I think Falmouth has to be proactive. You have to be proactive, the town manager's office has to be proactive. What is it that we want? And I know, a few years ago, Julian and I talked about when they put the new parking, when they took the ice rink away, they had to come before Concom. And one of the things we discussed were putting some trees in the parking lot. And then, and one of the, one of the commissioners was really upset that this is, you know, the, the bike path is, you know, sort of one of the gems of Falmouth, and do you really want to go along 600 yards of baked pavement, part of it on either side? And so after we had that, after we had the hearing, I said to Jen, I said, call up Bill Cludier, the engineer, and tell him we want a strip of, we want a strip of trees and, and bushes. I said, I know that we have no authority to ask for that, for conservation, but, you know, it would, it's the right thing to do. And so Jen set up a meeting, and Bill came in with, with another engineer he was working with, and they had plans with that buffer strip. And I know you talked about, we talked about the other buffer strips for the other part of the parking lot. So I think there are a number of things that we know need to be addressed, something like the jake brakes, the crossing, the bike path crossing, and Woods Hole Road. From the Steamship Authority's point of view, why would they care? Why would most of them care? But I think what we have to do is work together with the town of Falmouth, Mass DOT, and, and the Steamship Authority, and try to address some of these problems.
She stole my question.
She stole your question.
That's what I tried to do. Oh, you want to know? I had no idea. I haven't looked. I, I do believe that, that they've agreed with the plans, that they've worked with, with people in Falmouth and people in Woods Hole, the modified plans. But, you know, certainly, that's one of the things that will come up, and I'll, I'll learn about that if I'm appointed.
And what do you think about raising the fare?
Oh, okay, I'll tell you about, I do have an opinion on that. Obviously, if I were appointed, it's subject to what your view of this is. But I understand why they have the Steamship Authority, I mean, it was established in 1960. It's basically to serve the people on the islands. I used to live on an island. I used to live in the Caribbean. Getting people to and from the islands, getting freight to and from the islands is really important. And I can tell you, after Hurricane Hugo, when we had no communication with the outside world for two years, for two days, you really realize how isolated you are on an island. And so, that said, there are a lot of positives, positive and negative aspects to having the Steamship Authority go through Woods Hole. As far as the fares, there are people who need to use the Steamship. Those people, I think, should be accommodated in as best as possible. They, you know, they do have, they do have modified fares. I don't, you know, I, somebody would have to, have to run the numbers about, you know, how many people are in each of these categories. But it seems reasonable to me to put much of the burden, if they think they're going to get all this tourist traffic, to put much of the burden on the tourist traffic.
Thank you.
But, I mean, you'd have to run the numbers, how many are in each of these categories? The other, the other thing I would like to bring up, I think it's cycled through a few times, but I, I still would like to investigate and hopefully move towards having some of the freight not go through Woods Hole. It is true that most of the freight goes through Woods Hole, and that is a big issue in, for a number of reasons.
That's very true. And I know years ago, there was a lot of discussion about trying to get all the freight traffic, especially the freight traffic that comes up from New York, or New York State, Connecticut. Why come all the way around and down, and over the bridge and down to Falmouth to go when they could stop at New Bedford? And all that freight could just go from New Bedford to the islands. And I know there's a whole lot of issues around that, too. But I think at some point, it can be resolved, and it would make a huge, huge difference for us if that could happen. Well, as New Bedford continues to improve its port and its facilities over there, and as the rail service, if it ever does see any kind of fruition, going from Boston to New Bedford, or New York to New Bedford, or whatever, it would make a big difference than being able to reroute that traffic out of New Bedford to the islands.
Yeah, and it may play part of a role in how much parking is, is here in Falmouth.
And also, on, on the whole, on the, on the plan that's being looked at for the bridges. If you can eliminate a lot of freight traffic off the, off the Bourne Bridge, that would, that would make a huge difference.
Do we have, anybody have any other questions for Betsy?
I can tell you, since I, I decided to apply for this, and I talked to a number of people, hoping they would say, why would you want to do that? But that's not the reaction I got, unfortunately. But everyone in Falmouth has an opinion about the Steamship Authority. So we just have to harness those and work some solutions.
That's very true. And sometimes they, they raise the bar, and sometimes they don't. You know, they stay quiet for a while, and then sometimes it becomes the topic of conversation for months on end.
Well, and some problems can't be solved right away, but you could be sort of working towards it, and when the opportunity comes, then you offer it.
You'd mentioned that there was a meeting in March. Do you know what the date of that next Board of Governors meeting is? And not just ask you, as opposed to the other three, but...
I do know the date, because I looked up all the dates, because I have a lot of travel coming up, and unfortunately, I could make all the meetings. But it's like, it's before, I'm leaving the 18th, so it's the week before.
It's the 17th. I think it's March 17th.
16th or 17th, yeah.
Is that correct?
It's usually Tuesdays.
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
And I think that's because we have the option of voting tonight, this will be our next discussion, or voting on the 16th, which would then, if we voted on the 16th, it would be time enough for the individual to come down here and be sworn in and, and get to the meeting. So that's our, that's our next topic of discussion. So, well, thank you very much, Betsy. So now I will turn to the board and say, do you feel prepared that you want to make a decision tonight, or do you want to wait and give consideration, a little more consideration, and have this put on the agenda for the 16th?
I think it's a very, very hard decision.
It is a hard decision. Really poor, great candidates, so you've given us a very awesome task here.
I think if each one of us have read the information, and we've listened to all of the candidates, and I think we know their backgrounds, and, and we've listened to their presentation, I think we're ready to vote tonight.
You're ready to vote?
Yes.
Is there anyone else who is ready tonight, or would like to hold off? Is there anyone else who is ready tonight or would like to hold off and give it some more consideration?
I'm inclined to wait.
I've been to many of the board meetings. I, I'm ready to vote. I've got enough of what all the representatives put forth to, to match it to my recent experience at the meetings and I'm ready.
Sam?
I'm going, yep.
You're ready?
Yep.
I'm ready. So I guess, I guess we'll vote. Okay, so we have four candidates. Eric Geisendorf, Joe Martino, James T. Morse, and Elizabeth Gladfelter. And I'm going to start going backwards from the sheet. So it is not arbitrary at all. And for some reason, the names are just a little mixed up. So Sam, I'm going to start with you.
Joe Martino.
And Sue Moran.
Betsy Gladfelter.
Rebecca Moffett.
Betsy Gladfelter.
Okay, Doc Jones. Thanks a lot. So I have to break the tie. So I'm going to say Betsy Gladfelter. So, Betsy, you have the majority of the votes and you are now the Selectment's appointee to the Board of Governors for the Steamship Authority. Congratulations. I'm going to suggest we take a break. We've been here since six o'clock, so we'll take a three-minute recess.
Mm-hmm.[731.43]
I'm going to call the meeting back to order and we will proceed with the next item on our agenda, which is a vote to award and execute the lease management agreement for Falmouth Country Club. And Heather Harper, our Assistant Town Manager, hosts a presentation.
I have a very brief presentation, which will start with a request that if the board is so inclined to make a motion, that that motion be to vote to award the contract and authorize the town manager to execute the lease management agreement. A little different than your agenda, but it's got the signatory for the town manager. What I'd like to do is just walk through a little bit of the background on the property, the process that we went through to get here, what was learned along the way, and what the future holds, at least as far as we know at this point. So I'll start a little bit with the property. Back in 2004, the town acquired almost 240 acres of open space and golf-related property with 177 acres of a golf course. It's 27 holes, nine-hole course and an 18-hole course. It was over a $15.8 million acquisition. And at the time, the town was considering conceivable private alternatives of over 300 dwelling units. And I have a note up there that there was a very significant contribution from the 300 Committee. A $3 million commitment was made that was paid over several years to the town and paid for a permanent conservation restriction over the entire property. This again just demonstrates the size of the property, its location. I've heard it called, referred to as the jewel of East Falmouth. It's the largest open space in that area and has both recreational and environmental importance. The conservation restriction was placed on the entire property back in 2007. It's an Audubon Cooperative Sanctuary. It's also an Audubon certified wildlife and habitat management property. It's in the upper watershed of several of our coastal ponds and proves important in terms of our future in wastewater management. And I want to talk a little bit about the process. We've had lots of inquiry in our office and I know the board has been engaged in this by the public over the last year or so. We really began in earnest back last April when the town engaged a third-party investment analyst to take a look at the property. And that work began last April. In May through July of last year, the Board of Selectmen reviewed that report. The Golf Advisory Committee held a community forum and they adopted goals for the property, and I won't go through them, but that was the outcome of that process. The investment analysis and operational options was complete by WellSpeak, Dugus and Kane, and that was also reviewed by the Golf Advisory Committee. In July of 2014, and I want to note that all of this process, because it has to do with the fee interest in property is confidential, so this was essentially a property appraisal. And a lot of work was done with a large group of individuals, but it was done in a confidential process. The Board of Selectmen reviewed options for the lease management agreement. And then we issued a request for proposals in August. There was a national recruitment process along with a pre-bid conference that was held here in Falmouth at Falmouth Country Club. In September, on September 17th, we received the non-price proposal. We received one proposal from Billy Casper Golf. In October, the town manager convened an evaluation committee, including Selectmen Jones, Brian Coyne from the Recreation Committee, Charles Eastman from the Finance Committee, Helen Kennedy, our Recreation Director, and Carrie Murphy from the 300 Committee. On October 22nd, they informed the town manager that they found Billy Casper Golf's non-price proposal highly advantageous. And then the process of negotiating the fee proposal, and again, this is the confidential piece, is that the fee piece happened from November to January. There were multiple reviews with the Board of Selectmen. We met with the Golf Advisory Committee and held a stakeholders' meeting, which included the full membership of the Golf Advisory Committee, members of the Finance Committee and the 300 Committee, as well as the former chairman of the Golf Advisory Committee, Robert Young. So that was a very large discussion. So we engaged a lot of stakeholders along the way to make sure we were moving in a direction we felt the community could support. On February 2nd, the Board of Selectmen authorized the town manager to prepare a lease agreement consistent with the terms of a memorandum of understanding. And so that is the background, and I want to hit a little bit of what we learned along the way. So what we learned along the way, the board asked for a review of the options to manage Falmouth Country Club. It's again, it's a 238-acre acquisition of golf and open space acquired for $15 million. There's a permanent conservation restriction on the entire property, which really governs what other uses might occur out there, and they really are limited to the golf and recreational amenities. WellSpeak, Dugus and Kane prepared an options analysis. It was considered by the board in July. The board met personally with Jeff Dugus in executive session to review the investment and market analysis as well as management options. This is just a brief overview of that report. There are really three different options to manage the town's golf property. There's a self-manage option where the town would take on the property and essentially create a Department of Golf to operate the golf course. There's a management agreement, and that's where you'd issue a request for proposals similar to what we did, but we would pay an operator to operate the course, and the town would then collect all of the revenues related to the property. And the third is a lease management agreement, which is the one we have had experience with and what is offered for the board's consideration this evening. And this just talks a little bit about what the oversight responsibilities, the capital improvements, the annual revenue, how that's handled, the risk level and the annual appropriation. You can see that there is some, in terms of annual revenue, there is some possible incentive to taking a look at some of the more highly managed options, the management agreement or the self-managed option, but they come with a very high level of risk. And a little bit about the findings of that report, and I'll note that I'll make sure that all these end up on the town's website by the end of this week. We can release that so long as there is a positive vote of the board this evening. These are all quotes from WellSpeak, Dugus and Kane, and he noted that in comparison to other municipal golf courses, Falmouth Country Club is appropriately priced. We support between 40,000 and 44,000 rounds per year, and we generate between 1.45 and 1.65 million in total revenue. Operationally, the course is performing well and as good as can be expected in this tough economic climate. And then I add this quotation at the end. "The town of Falmouth fared better than most because of its long-term lease with Billy Casper Golf. Based on most recent revenue figures, golf revenue has remained stable for the last few years, ranging from a low of 1.43 million in 2011 to a high of 1.49 in 2012. This is unlike many clubs that have seen declining revenue due to fewer rounds and heavy discounting." One of the things we asked the appraiser or an analyst to take a look at is what is the potential return for investment on improvements to the property and to really test what a potential lease agreement might generate an additional revenue if the town were to make investments. And of course, one was the clubhouse. The clubhouse lacks a functional kitchen and refrigeration units. Therefore, patrons have access to a limited menu of prepackaged sandwiches, hot dogs and cold drinks. It is missing out on an ability to better serve the captive market. With modest improvements, net revenue to the town could be approximately $60,000 a year." Now I note that's after investment by the town. Those costs would not be recovered if we asked an operator to make the investment in the capital. It would be a net zero-sum game if you asked an investor to make the capital investment needed. Only with municipal investment would you see the annual revenues grow. Similarly, on the irrigation system, we asked whether the irrigation system, we've had a lot of community discussion about whether if the town made improvements to that system, whether those costs are again recoverable. And again, the finding of our consultant was that the irrigation system is not recoverable through the lease because it has no impact on the cost or the charge an operator can charge per round. It is a basic function of the facility, and irrigation system needs to be there in order to have a property maintained in a proper manner as a golf course. And then the more interesting pieces really are related to the market trends. We asked the consultant to both take a look backwards as well as forwards in terms of what we can expect to earn from a lease management agreement. Again, these are just notes from his report. "In the early part of the 2000s, the golf industry was in a state of euphoria with a number of core golfers growing nationally by 4 million golfers." There was what is now known as the Tiger Woods Effect, where there were so many new folks getting into the golf recreation as a recreational activity, that there was a related market impact to that. "In 2000, a total of 399 courses opened in the United States. That's more than a golf course every day." This trend began in 1998 and continued through 2002, meaning every year from 1998 to 2002, there are over 250 golf courses added to the market in the United States each year. Locally in our region, Plymouth's golf courses have created significant competition for core golfers, with six golf courses developed with good highway language and more land than any other community in the Commonwealth, creating an opportunity for even more golf potential. I heard today anecdotally that there are 11 golf courses in Plymouth, expected soon to be nine. And we'll talk about the next piece of what's happened in the market. Is with that overbuilding, coupled with a national recession, the effects on golf have been catastrophic. Nationally, the number of rounds played have dropped by 32 million from 2000 to 2009. Because of the decline in membership and increasing cost to operate, several regional private clubs have sold at discount prices, including the Ridge Club, Willow Bend, Boston Golf, and these regional golf course valuations. Sales activity indicate a loss in market value from 45% to 70%. Again, I just remind you, this all comes from the appraisers' report. And then our appraiser noted that the town of Falmouth has fared better than most. And I want to talk a little bit about what agreement we were able to negotiate over a very protracted, challenging negotiation process. The term is a five-year term with a renewal term of up to 10 years, so a total of 15-year potential. It allows for a separation if the town and our operator do not come to agreement on what the concession value is. So that means if the town comes to a point where we decide we want to invest in the property, we could either concession the property out as a separate vendor for food and beverage if Billy Casper Golf does not provide a proposal to the town that you find in your best interest. The annual payments to the town are from $395,000 to $400,000 over the next five years. And there is really a paradigm shift, and this is really the challenge that we confronted in the negotiation, is in order to meet what the market will bear for those annual payments, investment in the property by its owner, the town of Falmouth is necessary. There also will be capital improvements by Billy Casper Golf, which again is in addition to the annual payments, and we'll get how that plays out in a minute. But by Billy Casper Golf, they're proposing to invest $145,000 in the property. $75,000 are for bunker repairs, which are the type of investment and attribute that they can need to sustain the rounds per year and the value per round, so that the player experience remains similar or better to what is there now. There's $70,000 proposed for clubhouse repairs, including necessary roof, electrical and shed repairs, and that fund, those funds would be available within 30 days of the lease agreement. A little shift from the town, the past agreement is the town is committing some staff resources. We have our own electrician, we have a carpenter, we have a facilities crew. We'll hope, help, help add value to that $70,000 to make it go just a little bit further on our own property. By the town of Falmouth, we're proposing to invest over the next five years $283,000 in capital for equipment. If you recall, or for those of you that do recall, when the town acquired the golf course, we acquired all of the equipment with that. Most of that equipment was replaced when Billy Casper took the property on, but it's all 10 years old and very well-used and in need of replacement. We've proposed a schedule, a replacement schedule, beginning with an article at this spring annual town meeting, and then additional requests over the next four years, each year in our capital plan as we would with any other capital needs. The irrigation system, we've talked an awful lot about over the last eight months or so. The irrigation system is estimated to cost on the low end of $800,000. We're very, very grateful, and we view it as a key threshold in the community commitment to investing in this recreational and open space property. $229,000, and we count those funds on hand, understanding there's a match involved there. And the town agrees to fund in total the irrigation system over a three-year period. The town also has agreed to propose, not to fund, but to propose clubhouse design no later than 2017. So that's something we bring back once we get through some of these more fundamental capital needs, whether the town has an appetite for clubhouse improvements. I want to talk a little bit about the financial controls of the conservation restriction, the finances and the financial controls. In addition to annual revenue, we've sustained a revenue sharing agreement, which we view as key to recognizing the importance of the relationship with the town and the operator, that if the operator is doing well and bringing, increasing the annual revenue, the operator will benefit from that and the town will benefit that, and that's on a 50/50 basis. There's also a new feature that we are including all revenues. In the last lease, we did not include golf, pro shop and food and beverage in the revenue sharing. And while it's a small percentage, the 10%, it really recognizes that that's a key area of future revenue interest of the town. We will also be provided with annual revenue statements, as well as be provided an opportunity for auditing and internal control review. The conservation restriction, again, you recall that was purchased by the 300 Committee and very much celebrated by our community. It's a very large and active property with a full restriction. In order to sustain our commitment to that, Billy Casper Golf, in collaboration with the 300 Committee, will train all personnel on the course of the restriction and all of its requirements. The operator will also be responsible for preparing annual reports to the 300 Committee. And the 300 Committee has agreed to participate with Billy Casper Golf on an annual walkthrough of the property to review the course relative to a baseline conditions report that was completed about three years ago. How does a town fare relative to the market? That of course is the question. And this just gives you a recap of the market investment analysis that was presented to the board and many others over the last several weeks. The estimated annual lease expectations are about $407,000 with capital improvements by the town. That's 24% of gross revenue. That's what WellSpeak, Dugus and Kane projected was the market value of this property. An additional $60,000 would be possible with food and beverage improvements. The capital improvements, irrigation system, the bunkers will not be recovered with the lease agreement. Again, that's back to what our appraiser found. And then a little bit about the golf course valuation, and this just gives you an indication of what's gone on in the market and with this property, and it really does show you why this property is a little different than some of the others in our region. Back in 2004, the golf course alone was valued at $8 million with an annual revenue projection 10 years ago of $1.64 million, with an annual projected revenue lease payment of $462,000 with 50,000 rounds per year. In 2014, you see just basically flat annual revenue with the escalation of costs of goods for services sold, as well as the staffing and all the equipment that's needed to maintain the golf course. Those revenues have remained flat, and therefore the projected annual lease revenue was $407,000 based on, again, this is the key feature, a loss of about 8,000 rounds per year in terms of what should be, what's anticipated for play on that property. Again, the recessionary effects on golf have been catastrophic. The values of properties have reduced between 43% and it's really 70%. Recent agreements in our region show that the Turoh Links with Johnson Golf is at 16% of gross revenue, Rockland at 15%, Strawberry Hills at 12.8%, and town of Falmouth has negotiated a five-year contract between 23% and 26% of gross annual revenue, and that's right within where the market was anticipated at 24%. What is the long-term fiscal impact? Of course, the community is well aware that the town acquired this with a note. The annual debt service payments is approximately $600,000 a year. With the balance of revenue on hand with this lease agreement over the next five years, the town will remain, have enough revenue from annual operations to pay debt service, and that would continue through 2022 with no improvements in operations or increases in annual debt, annual lease payments. And again, I just returned that it maintains a lifelong recreational activity for the community, as well as continues our commitment to environmental stewardship. And again, you have before you the lease agreement, which looks like this. And essentially, all of the key terms were outlined in that PowerPoint presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just want to say that I think we're very fortunate to have the golf course. I think the thrust of the course has been that it's a community golf course. It's there for the people of Falmouth, and it particularly, I think, focuses on a lot of young people and children. And there are many opportunities for school-aged children here in town to have the opportunity to go there and play for free and learn how to play golf and hopefully somehow become golfers later on in life and maybe stay with it and stay here and continue to use the golf course. So that's an important benefit that we don't ever want to lose track of, that it's a community golf course and it's there for people of all ages and especially young people. So I think they provide a valuable recreation tool and option for families. So I think we're very privileged to have it done.
I want to commend Heather and Julian for negotiating what I think is a vastly superior offer than what we were working with in the fall. And I think to be able to get that dollar figure in revenue and also the 50/50 revenue share are two very important pieces. And pushing us in a direction that, I see what those numbers are in 2022, but that doesn't mean, that's sort of a worst-case conservative point of view, we may be able to do better by then. And I think it's very impressive.
I want to point out all of those things, and I certainly do second Doug's, thank you to Julian and to Heather for all the hard work they've done. But this is an enormous piece of property that we've taken out of development. We're fighting right now to get nitrogen under control in our estuaries. At least we have a conservation restriction and an agreement to manage this in a conservative nutrient way, you know, where fertilizers managed in a responsible and minimal kind of way. I mean, that alone makes this an enormous asset to the town and something we can be really proud of. And so I think this is a great opportunity for us to have this agreement with Billy Casper Golf to provide recreation, but also have the benefit of a conservation restriction that extends over the entire property.
Anybody else?
I think I'll just say I agree with everything I just listened to.
All right, so what is that motion again?
My move that we...
Oh, do you have it?
Award and authorize the town manager to execute the lease management agreement for Falmouth Country Club with Billy Casper Golf.
Second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chairman, and members of the board, I was actually a victim of the Arnold Palmer Effect. Dating myself right... I want to thank and acknowledge my colleague Heather Harper for the responsibility and dedication she's shown and exercised as far as moving this forward consistently to the finish line that we brought to the Board this evening. So thank you, Heather. I appreciate that. Your knowledge and insight based on past conditions has been extraordinary and a huge help to ensuring, really, the success in what we're able to bring forward today. So I want to acknowledge that and pass on that thanks.
That's great. You're welcome. Okay. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Heather's learned a lot about golf in the last few years, including becoming a golfer, but sort of. Okay. Next, Brian Curry is going to talk about the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan. Brian, if you would.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the Board. I was actually a victim of the Arnold Palmer effect. Dating myself right now. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Just to introduce to the Board, this is a multi-hazard mitigation plan. It's a document that essentially characterizes and catalogs types of natural disasters or hazards that the community can face. And they range everywhere from hurricanes to earthquakes to drought to tornadoes. It came about really a resurgence of this type of plan after Superstorm Sandy. And Congress has authorized a great deal of mitigation monies out there, so put a little staff activity into resurrecting these plans. So I think it'll take about five minutes for your benefit, the benefit of the public that's watching, to walk through the nine chapters, answer your questions, and hopefully the result that we send this draft document off to the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for their initial review. It has to go through them first before it actually gets to FEMA. And it's really broken down into nine chapters. Obviously, hopefully you have a copy or had a PDF of it. Gets, perhaps, chapter one gets into the whys and why we're doing this. Obviously, the purpose of the plan is to reduce risk of the property in life. It's an operational-level plan. Secondary in our efforts is that it also, like I mentioned before, it opens up the possibility of Sandy-type grants, Sandy mitigation grants. Without the plan, you're not in a very competitive situation, very much like these park or land grants we get at the state level, they're actually federal dollars, but you'd need an open space plan to be competitive, to get in line. So that's why we've asked, we had actually put a little more emphasis on some of our planning staff time. Chapter two is the process we went through. This actually began back around 2007, 2008 with Deputy Broder and Brian Dale from DPW, and we were looking at some of the fire break issues with the Beevy Woods. It actually then evolved into a grant from MEMA, who were actually able to hire an intern. And that person, together, I want to mention Sarah Brooks from the Department of Natural Resources, did a very good job in formulating the base of this plan and then brought it forward around 2010 to the, actually contracted, I think, a little bit of time with the Kipkot Commission to do the plan. We're still involved with doing it. In March of this year, Julian formed a working group, the Chiefs, myself, Bob Shea from GIS, the town engineer, to actually accelerate the planning process. We used a local emergency planning committee, it's about 40 folks, from NSTAR through the village commissioners, the hospital, to bounce this plan off of them as an operational document. We met with them, I believe, three or four times, and meet with them again as the plan evolves. You can look at figure 2.4 in the plan, it'll put you through that planning process. Like any federal plan, you have to have lots of data, and section three is just that the local profile is literally word for word taken from our open space and recreation plan. Sorry, never reamed that wheel. But it gets into a lot of the history of the community, population, demographics, or land uses, or any kind of development. And so there is a baseline for someone who's going to be in Philadelphia to review, where's Falmouth, what's it all about? Sure, they'll find it fascinating. Chapters four, five, and six is where it sort of hits the road. In chapter four, we sort of categorize, characterize some of the natural hazards that the community faces. Table 4.3 is the key table that outlines what we consider to be the highest risks that the town faces over the planning horizon, which is 20 years. And it's flooding with sea level runs. You can see that scored a 20, together with winded flooding associated with major storms such as hurricanes and more estuaries are what we are probably very vulnerable to. And that risk and vulnerability assessment is key to the document because it's the basis for which a lot of underwriting happens when we get into our federal programs for National Flood Insurance Program. Although it's a planning document, it does get, it does get their, catch their eye. And chapter five gets into that type of vulnerability assessment. The key figures are 5.2. You'll notice that we have almost $2 billion in FEMA flood stuff. That gets the underwriters' attention. And table 5.8 is the summary tape, gets into some of the issues with regards to just what happens when we get a major event. We also go through a very important process where we identify in this document what our critical infrastructure is, and it's chapter six. Chapter six gets into what's known as tier one, tier two, tier three critical infrastructure, and then we map it. Tier one are your first responder, police, fire, DPW. Tier twos are your government buildings. Tier threes are obviously, buildings are important, but not when you're facing 24 hours before, during, and after the event. And we map those to find out what hazard zones there is. You'd be amazed to find out that this building is fairly vulnerable, which is why the Emergency Operations Center is down the road from the Fire Department. But we also get into things like pump stations, lift stations, all the critical activities and functions that the town will have to have during an event. And then chapter seven gets into all our existing mitigation measures. We have our EOC, we have our plans, our regulations, projects that are going on in town, what we have for backup power supplies, what we have for shelters, what we have for mutual aid, and what we do for public outreach to get the people aware that, you know, there's an event on the horizon. But it's really in chapter eight where it's really the guts of the plan, where we want to get the plan mitigation and what we want to do. And if we have, you know, resources available, perhaps, to these grant awards, it would be something that would be in the list of things we would want. And they're broken down to public safety, property protection, structural projects, and public information. And I won't repeat them as they're in front of you, but some of them are to establish evacuation procedures. We haven't had to use them. The closest we came was during Hurricane Bob. We find out we didn't have any. We may want to formalize those. Some of the things we're looking at also are the formalization of some of our mutual aid agreements. Some of them are a little loose, so we'd like to formalize that together with the county and the sheriff's department. We also wanted to take a look at some of the mitigation measures associated with greenways. I know Betsy Gladfalding was here and voted some things for the Kuna Mesut. We have some other blood storage, property protection, public safety, greenway-type of activities, and they're going to be coming forward hopefully as this plan progresses. The town engineer and I have been discussing some of our hardware and structural improvements, some of the causeways, Chappaquay Road, the bluffs, some of the erosion issues for property protections in the streets that if you get a big event, won't be there afterwards. And lastly, chapter nine is plan adoption. That's why I'm here tonight. MEMA and FEMA want to know that the political leadership of the community is aware of this document. It's still in its draft form. It's going to go through an iterative process of us putting it together, sending it to MEMA. They will send it back to us saying praise, I'm sure. We will then iteratively send it back to them. Once they finalize it, it then goes to Philadelphia, to the FEMA folks, or Region One, or Boston Region One, and then finally to Washington, DC, and you're in the queue. But that is it in a nutshell. One of the other important reasons I'm here tonight is that they're big into the public process. This document's been online, a month or two. We did televise it, all that local emergency planning committee meetings are televised. I did the same presentation with a PowerPoint for the benefit of the public. FCTV was there. I think it's been running for about a month or two. That got into a more of an in-depth presentation that I know you would love to have tonight at 10 o'clock, but I decided that I'd keep that in my back pocket. I'd be happy to answer any questions if possible. If you could send this along to MEMA tonight, that'd be great. If not, we'll go back and work out some more.
Questions, Sam?
Yeah. Brian, I noticed that there's a number of holes in here, some even some red phrases that are put in here that I assume are open for modification, you know, and what would appear to be perhaps some capital needs. I see that the high school is used for an emergency center, but there's recommendations for putting solid surface roof in and replacing the glass that's there now. I mean...
It's all open for discussion.
Okay.
This is a very, this is a draft document. I know the chief was, the chief of the fire and rescue, I think, put that in there. The sound engineer has put in projects, but that's why we're here tonight. There might be things that maybe you want to take out, there are things you might want to put in, but this is just the first blush at it for this board tonight.
But I'm sorry, so it's still, but it's in a form that you feel comfortable in turning over to MEMA at this point?
Yeah, they want, they want to get into the plan earlier than later. They don't want us to go through a process for a year and a half or two years, and then they send it back with a laundry list. They're not going to get so much into the, gee whiz, we think it should be, you know, corrugated metal and not reinforced, whatever it is. But they want to know that we've sort of followed their formula. It's a formula-driven plan, just like the open space plan is formula-driven by the federal government. They're dispersing federal funds. It's administered by the state, and we would like to be able to get to them at this 50% level of effort before we go too much further with it.
Brian, I know that there are a number of items in here that are in red that are action items. Some are already being considered and others, it's hard to know. How will, will you modify that as they're completed? Is that the idea?
Correct. Right now, this is the first blush of the type of structural projects. Why it's in red font, I forget. I think it was from the Fire Department. I'm not sure. But yes, as the plan progresses, some of these, some of these may come out, some of the, some other new ones may come in. But this is our first blush, at least at the department level, putting in these types of things that they may want to see as mitigation efforts. Subject to change.
So Becky, you had a question?
Oh, I did. The first time we had a discussion about FEMA and the map, I think you were showing us of Falmouth, and there were a lot of residents that were shocked with that because it was including their home, that they didn't think they were in a flood zone. Is there any change to that? I don't know how that's related, but I do think the minute you say FEMA and you say flood zone, they want to know, am I still in that flood zone plan?
Yeah, there, those maps, those flood insurance rate maps were approved back in July of 2014. This plan is, reacts to that. And now there are some properties that are out, there are some properties that are in, and we want to be able to identify those properties and help mitigate either through property protection or structural projects or public information, what might happen down the road. But the FEMA, the flood insurance rate maps are, there's not much, and back in, like I told, back then, back in 1975, the town actually put their own flood maps together. And then the early 80s, the federal government stepped in it and standardized everything. It's actually the planning board went to town meeting in 1975 to do the topographic maps, produce the flood set. So it's not anything terribly new, but the federal government has taken over the mountain because they're federal.
Thank you. So what you're saying, Brian, is that we could approve this now, so you could send it on, but would it come back to us again each time you, on a more planned basis?
Probably. I'm hopeful that this next grant round is sometime in July. So if we, with your permission to send it along, we'll probably get it back in a month, work on it iteratively in the next three or four months, if we want to be ready for the next grant round, which is in July.
Everybody, Sam?
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, the document is pretty thorough, and it's, you know, it really does give people, you know, somebody who's not familiar with the Cape and Falmouth in particular, a pretty good overview of where we sit in terms of risks in the town.
Like I said, there's a lot of folks who are responsible for that document, you know, from the Chiefs to DNR to GIS, so it's an interdepartmental effort.
There, in section 7.4, I would think we'd want to put in the specific bylaws, general zoning, rather than just simply have a parental bracket there. I mean, MEMA would at least probably appreciate it if we put in our own information.
We try to, we try to send them the, that, this document, but as in the appendices, this document will pass the federal heft test, I call it.
Wow.
And it's all settled down. You know, even the critical infrastructure, the tier one, two, and threes is a fairly large document. But yes, eventually it might as well finalize document, it'll pass the heft test.
Yeah, we call that plop weight.
It will. Go plop. All right.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just one comment. I do want to thank and acknowledge Brian for his leadership on the staff in moving this forward, working with the key individuals, staff members and other resources, as noted in the plan and commented with the draft that the Board has. And this, as Brian's noted, subject to the concurrence of the Board, would place us in a position to be able to capture some federal funding that would be forthcoming later this year. Absent this, the town would not be in a position to capture this funding, and we had that challenge a year ago when it came to our attention that funds would be available. However, we did not have the resource document allowing us to take advantage of it, and again, Brian's leadership has allowed us to come to this point and bring this to the Board with this formative document. So I do want to acknowledge and thank Brian on behalf of all of us in the administration for stepping up.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
I would authorize the submission of the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan by Mr. Curry to the next step where it goes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Are we going to mark it as a draft, at least?
Well...
Obviously, it's a work in progress.
Oh, yes. It's a draft.
Great.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. Thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, you might as well stay for the next one, too. This is, the planning board, I was part of some of these discussions, and I'm glad to see that Ralph is here and Paul, regarding the local housing partnership, the LIP programs. Every time we have a LIP, it's kind of like bringing people together and making sure that, maybe you can, maybe, well, I don't know.
I can, if you'd like.
Yeah, well, why don't you kind of frame where we are with the LIP and why we have asked the planning board and staff to become more involved in this?
I might ask for some help, but...
Okay. Brian, you can give us...
The local initiative program is the method by which affordable housing development partners with the community, and that is considered the subsidy that they obtain in order to facilitate their project. So they bypass the state process of site approval and come straight to the Board of Selectmen to have their project go through the comprehensive permit process. And essentially, the town becomes the co-partner with those developments. They're very special projects. They're projects that meet the unique criteria established by the community for local initiative projects. They aren't just every comprehensive permit. Not to say that comprehensive permits that aren't LIP aren't also great proposals. These are special projects that meet sort of a higher level of, a higher standard. In order to facilitate that, the town, if they have one, needs to get the review of the local housing partnership. In Falmouth, we identify the Falmouth Housing Committee as the local housing partnership. We have, I don't know if we have any LIPS pending right now, but they're fairly routine, and we do require the local housing partnership to evaluate those proposals. In addition to the local housing partnership, this Board of Selectmen established a LIP review committee, which convenes two members of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the planning board, and a member of the Affordable Housing Committee, to review those projects before it appears before the Board of Selectmen. So there's a couple of different pre-development processes or pre-approval processes that happen, but the local housing partnership is one piece of it. The, and I don't want to go too far here, but it's my understanding that the Affordable The, and I don't want to go too far here, but the, it's my understanding that the Affordable Housing Committee has had some challenges in maintaining its quorum in order to ensure that we have a local housing partnership in place. The Planning Board has proposed to step up and take that role on, and then Brian can take it from there.
Okay, Brian?
Right, this, most towns don't have a local housing partnership. Duxbury used to have one. You don't have, you can have one. But the whole purpose behind this is really to help streamline this, what could be, what has proven to be somewhat of a cumbersome process, make it a little more transparent. I think planning boards, as, I'm not talking about the incumbent Sunday Planning Board, the incumbent committee. I think a planning board is supremely suitable for this type of a role. They form their goals and policies for the housing element to bring to town meeting. They form the zoning bylaws that help implement them. They review complex site plans for developments, and they properly staff to have the people who can take a look at the financial pro formas and are literally experts in 40B regulations. So our purpose here is to streamline transparency and allow you to have the best information when you co-partner on a 40B project, because LIP projects are just about the only game in town these days, because the subsidies have pretty much gone away. So I think it's something we had discussed before, brought to the attention, I think, of the chairmans, they met, discussing with the planning board. You can always change your mind later, but I think for some of the complex LIP projects that we've had, I think the planning board is supremely suited to take a, take a look at these, because you are the co-applicants. And more importantly, the state is also requiring these LIP projects, and we start doing more in terms of monitoring and monitoring the monitoring. So I think it's time.
And so the planning board actually has met, and they have voted to accept the responsibility as the local housing partnership to review all the local initiative applications.
And you get about one or two a year. There's not a whole heck of a lot.
Yeah, they're not, not all that many.
We had an influx because we had the procurements with the town on land, Glenwood Avenue, Oddfellows Hall, St. Mark's. St. Mark's Road, thank you. We've had Cloverfield, Chester and Ward, we've had Palm Park, which is going to be a very complex project. So those, you get about one or two a year.
Okay, questions? You had your head up yet?
Help me understand how this relates to the housing study that was recently done and the role of the various housing stakeholders that participated in that study.
I'm not sure I use that as the basis of my decision-making or my recommendation here. This is something that we've been seeing happen over the years before that study came out. Some of the, the process of getting LIP applications in front of the selectmen was very difficult and time-consuming. People would ask to get on, we'd have to find the committee members, we'd get a meeting together, we'd get the plans in. So I, the sense of frustration I've had from the development community on the LIP process goes back years. So that's the really genesis of the recommendation here. There was that recent demand, housing demand study for rural housing. I believe there's a recommendation that's in there for streamlining, but this goes back years.
So would you say this is one effort in streamlining?
Correct. I know whereas the planning board meets two, three times a month, you still be beyond their agenda. Call up, you get on, you get the plans together, we review them for them, we get the pro formas, boom, you're there, instead of trying to find the, sometimes an arduous task of getting the members of the selectmen, the planning board, the zoning committee all together, get them down, sit them down, and all we go. You get on the select, you get on the planning board's agenda, boom, you're done.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions? Anybody else in, yes, Annie Conley?
Hi, I'm Annie Conley. I'm the executive director for the Falmouth Housing Trust. I do have some questions, but I appreciate Brian's explanation. I think that that has answered some of them. In terms of an applicant's role, and have you anticipated foreseeable changes in the process that are actually going to streamline it? I mean, we alluded to it a little bit. I, I myself would say that, that what we currently have is fragmented and is a little difficult to master, but I'm getting the hang of it. But you and I worked closely on both the Housing Trust LIP projects, which is St. Mark's and Oddfellows, because they were town land, they were procurement processes, processes that came out of town meeting. I don't know, not all LIPS are municipally sponsored, I guess, through town meeting and excess inventory land. My, my sort of big questions are, is the planning board, the planning board's a regulatory board, and of course, the zoning board of appeals is also a regulatory board, is the planning board going to take on a role as, are they going to, I guess, exert the regulatory powers in the, in the site review process, meaning is it going to be binding, or will you still then go back to the zoning board of appeals to, I mean, I know we have to go to the zoning board of appeals for the actual comprehensive permit, but, so the site plan review...
I have a question. Are we going to answer the question, or are you...
Yeah. Can I answer the question?
No, the, the planning board doesn't issue a comprehensive permit. Comprehensive permit will always be issued by the board of appeals when it's required. Not all LIP projects require a comprehensive permit. There are some known as local action units, where there's no 40B permit whatsoever. 20 Shore Street are local action units. But I don't envision the planning board having a regulatory role. They would be essentially forming this board as co-applicants. You are the applicant, the town is the applicant. And they're in a position to guide your thinking as to what's the best outcome in terms of, does this comport with the goals of a comprehensive plan? Does it comport with certain 40B regulatory environments? And does the site planning make sense for the initial site planning as part of the development?
Okay. So that's sort of what I gleaned. I did do a fair amount of last-minute research today, because I didn't realize this was on the agenda. Shame on me. I should start scouring them. But that sort of brings me to my next point, which is, as, as a developer, I appreciate this, because certainly it sounds like it will make things a little less arduous. And certainly, I have relied heavily on the planning board, I mean, the planning staff to assist with both our projects underway, particularly Oddfellows Hall, which is complicated, with the pro forma and size of the units, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I guess I was a little surprised, and I think Sue got some feedback today, some of my colleagues were a little disappointed that there wasn't more of a consensus building around this change. Maybe it's not deemed a huge change, maybe it's just simply an administrative change, but I think, you know, we're really all back to, and this may not be totally germane to, to this proposal specifically, but, you know, where are we after the housing roundtable event? What are we doing? Are we doing anything? Are we following up? Are we making a plan of action? Are we getting the stakeholders in the same room? Are we going to make some changes? This looks like one positive step in the right direction, but there's many more things we need to do.
That's for another discussion, not tonight. We know that, that we have had some conversations recently, in the last week, or this week is a matter, last week, and we are, we have to move in that direction. That's for another conversation.
Okay.
This is just one step in the process.
Okay.
It is on our agenda, I think, with the planning board meeting that we're having next week.
Yes, and we are meeting jointly with the planning board next week.
Okay, great, great. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Oh, good, thank you. Anybody else? No?
My question. Now, with this happening, are we not going to have to have the LIP subcommittee also? If that, if the planning board's doing that and then coming to us, the committee that we had that had two selectmen and a planning board member is not necessary, right? It would seem redundant. Yes, correct.
That's the idea.
The board, if my, I, right hand, the board vote that. The board should vote to discontinue the LIP advisory committee.
Oh, okay. So we're voting to proceed, no, we're voting to authorize the planning board to serve as the local partnership, and then to eliminate the...
Or discontinue.
Or discontinue the local advisory committee. Okay, that would be the motion.
Good.
If anyone is prepared to...
I would actually prefer to do this two separate motions.
Okay.
The first, to authorize the planning board to serve as the full Falmouth Local Partnership for Local Initiative Applications.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And I would also move that we discontinue the local initiative...
LIP advisory committee.
The LIP advisory committee.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I think that's good, because it, it caused a group of people who have not been involved in something, maybe for months and months on end, to try to come together and figure it all out. This establishes a group that has staff support, so that there's an ongoing review and discussion about what's going on, and we're not just stepping into something when actually it just causes more confusion than anything else. Right, thank you very much, Brian.
Good, thank you.
Good.
Thanks to the planning, thanks to the planning board for picking this up.
Thank you, Ralph, for being here. Next is to discuss and vote in order to proceed with the Boines Pond Inlet Widening Project. Mr. Turkington.
Eric Turkington, Chairman of the Falmouth Water Quality Management Committee. With me here tonight is our Vice Chairman, Virginia Valiella. And from Applied Coastal, John Ramsey, and from GHD, Nate Weeks, as well as Jerry Latanis, our mentor. We, we have a short presentation I'd like to make tonight, and I know this board is totally familiar with why the town is doing this, but, but for anyone who's still watching on television, we should, we should, we should tell them why we're doing this again. It's, it's worth repeating. The estuaries of this town are our most valuable resource. We have 15 estuaries, ranging from McGansett all the way around the coast to Warkburg. More estuaries than any other town in Massachusetts. They are a huge contribution to all of our property values and a huge contribution to our local economy, and they are in trouble. We all know they're in trouble, and we all know why. The main cause is excessive nitrogen, which is causing eutrophication and fish kills every, every year, entirely due to the massive development that's taken place in this town since 1950s. We have roads, we have malls, parking lots, and most of the controllable nitrogen comes from home septic systems. Falmouth has had a plan and has adopted a plan and has supported a plan for the last three or four years now. To restore these estuaries, it involves three basic elements. First element, sewer as little as possible. Second element, pursue alternatives, not just researching them, but implementing them and seeing what works and what doesn't and what's cost-effective. Third piece, which we've been able to do up till now and will continue, is to fund any of these projects with no tax rate increase. Next slide, please. This is one of those alternatives, the Boines Pond Inlet Opening. We actually have a 10-year history of this being on the town's radar screen. In April of 2005, the first MEP report recommended widening Boines Pond Inlet as a prime way to reduce the nitrogen there. April in 2011, this went to town meeting, and the town meeting voted $350,000 for designing the Boines Pond Inlet widening and bridge. In August of 2011, this board unanimously approved the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan for the town, which included Boines Pond Inlet Widening. In January of 2004, the state, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, accepted Falmouth CWMP, which included the Boines Pond Inlet Opening. A month later, the Cape Commission also accepted it, and in April of 2014, this last year, town meeting and the town voters appropriated $5.5 million for design permitting and construction of the Boines Pond Inlet opening by, I might add, a 58 to 42 percent margin, which for a giant capital project is pretty unprecedented. Okay, a couple of pieces are in this plan. One is a new bridge. If you're going to widen the inlet, you have to have a new bridge. GPW and the committee and the board looked at several different possible designs and came up with the one up at the top here. It's the most cost-effective and for a lot of reasons was deemed to be the easiest to maintain and the most appropriate. The current bridge that's there, it was built in 1986, so it's almost 30 years old, and while it's not falling apart, you know, 30 years is time to look at bridges anyway. The new bridge design will, will incorporate a fishing platform. This was one of the citizens' recommendations that everybody thought was a good idea, so on, on the pond side, when this is built, there's going to be a fishing platform. The main purpose, of course, is effective nitrogen removal, and the basic premise here is a 90-foot inlet stream will do a better job than a 50-foot stream. This 90-foot was actually George Souza's idea back in 1980, when he first talked about relocating the inlet over there. The experts in Boston chiseled it down to 50 feet, but now the experts have, have come back and told us that 90 feet was the right idea in the first place, so we're, so we're back to doing 90 feet. A 90-foot inlet will remove 1,995 kilograms of nitrogen per year. That is about half of the total nitrogen that we need to remove from Boines Pond each year to restore the water quality in that water body. We did sort of a cost comparison, and these are obviously educated guesses as far as the numbers go, but, but if you remove that amount of nitrogen, it's the equivalent of removing the amount of nitrogen that you would get by sewer-ing 400 homes. The cost of sewer-ing 400 homes would be a lot more than the Simil opening. It would be approximately $19 million, more than three times the cost of this project. Now, as Brian has brought to all of our attention, and, and of course, the rest of the world is paying attention too, we have a sea level rise and a storm surge issue here, as we do everywhere else on the coast of the world, and so we hired John Ramsey to take a look at very specifically this project and what the impact would be as far as sea level rise and storm surges. And what he came up with is widening the inlet from 50 feet to 90 feet does not increase the flooding of any residential properties. This was a concern of some residents, quite rightly, and the, and the answer is no. Regardless of the inlet width, when you have a 100-year storm surge, it's going to go right over the road, right over the bridge, and it would do that now. Nothing, nothing will, nothing will hold back a 100-year storm. This won't make any difference. Any storm surge greater than four and a half feet will overtop the road. How much sea level rise we're going to see is something that is unknowable. At the moment, the estimates range all over the place. A fairly conservative estimate that our consultant used suggested that this issue will not be critical during the 75-year lifetime of this project at this location. However, the existing shoreline erosion west of the inlet, which has nothing to do with this project, does threaten the stability of Monont Road. Within 40 years, unless something is done, like beach nourishment, you may well see that road threatened in that timeframe. But again, that's to the west of where this inlet opening and bridge would be, would be constructed. So we're here tonight to ask the Board of Selectmen to take the final step in what has been, as you see, a several-year project and commitment by the town, and that is to vote to submit a notice of project change to the, to the MIFA agency at the state. vote to submit a notice of project change to the, to the NEPA agency at the state. The next step, once it gets to them, is they will, all the environmental agencies in the state and the federal government will weigh in and tell us what more we need to know and do to, to go ahead with this project. But your, your task tonight, if you so choose, is to send it to them, and we'll, we'll move the project forward. The experts are here with any questions that you might have, and happy to answer them.
I think mine's a trivial one. The reason it's called a notice of project change is the project was done 30, 25 years ago with a 50-foot width inlet widening, and it's now we're changing it to 90. Is that why it's a project change?
Actually, it's a notice of project change. The original plan that the town submitted to the state was 2002. Is that right? It's, um... Okay, come on up. Your, your expert can tell you this one.
Hello, I'm Nate Weeks from GHD, and this submittal would be a project change to the current Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. You'll recall that that plan identified these projects, non-traditional type of projects to go through, but they would need to have some additional study. The NEPA review process agreed to that, and they pretty much said that, well, once you do some more work and you want us to review it, then you'll file a notice of project change. So, I think to answer your question, the, the project change is a change to their previous approval of the CWMP.
And that's the preferred language that they want in this, is notice of project change. That's really the state's language.
It is. It's the state's language.
And that's what they want to see.
Yep.
Okay. And the other thing that's important about it is that it will not cause increased flooding in the estuary. That was a concern that some of the homeowners had, that if the inlet were widened, that more water would come in and there would be more flooding, and their homes could be exposed, but that, Mr. Ramsey told us, is not the case.
Well, that's right. We had a public hearing and invited the neighbors from Monont, in Davisville to come, and a good many of them did, and John was there to explain the situation, and I think most of them left quite happy with the project.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that, you know, as Eric had pointed out, obviously, when everything goes over the road, all bets are off. But what we did show is that when you get more and more water in the inlet before it goes over the road, the inlet becomes very efficient in its current state, just like it would in the wider state, and it carries water in very efficiently once, once the water gets elevated. So, both conditions are the same, effectively.
And there's no reason for the tide height to go higher just because there's more water coming in?
Correct. And no more water actually comes in when you have a flood. It only comes in when the water's lower, very typical tidal conditions.
That, that was, that was good to know. Okay. Any other questions? So, the motion would come on voting to authorize the town manager to submit a notice of project change for the Boons Pond Inlet Project.
Scored. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much for your work.
Thanks for spending the evening with us. I know. The next item on the agenda is, is a, is a discussion. I do not anticipate that we will be voting anything tonight, but we have heard from the Woods Hole Community Association, and also from, by the way, I've had many, many emails this week, since many of them have heard that this is on our agenda tonight. The idea is, unwelcome, chief. The, the idea that was proposed, Catherine did meet with Julian and some other people and myself, to kind of give us some idea of what the Woods Hole neighborhood was really, our community was looking for in, in the off-season in terms of having more parking available. And I think, Catherine, do you want to just kind of explain why we're here tonight talking about this?
I'm, I'm happy to, I'm Catherine Bumpus, Woods Hole Community Association. I, I will be as brief as possible, given the time and the fact that we've been here for the evening. I've touched base with a number of few on this, and this came out of the feeling that it's winter and that many in the community would like our village back a little bit, and how can we utilize it better and still have turnover in the parking and still have people who want to come to the village, want to do business in the village, want to use the, the few businesses that are open. And so, there's been a lot of discussion, you know, should there be no limits on parking? What, what should we do? We decided we'd ask if you all would consider saying two hours at, two-hour parking everywhere in Woods Hole. Through the discussion, it became clear that just looking at Water Street and Ludcombe made sense, so it's approximately 29 meters would be covered to make those spaces into two-hour parking. We are asking if you would try this for a month. Pat, you said you don't think you'll vote it tonight. We'd really love it if you'd vote it tonight, because trying it now for a month would give us a month in really, as much as I'd like to believe it will be spring in a month, maybe it will be, maybe it won't be, but while it's still very winter-like. I know that the business association hasn't met to talk about this, but I do know that you've had emails from a number of the businesses that are open that would be affected by this. We're not thinking about asking you ever to change the summer parking regulations, the, the rate at the meters currently. We're not talking about that right now. This is to see if having some meters that are free, or some parking spaces that are free, but still turnover on a regular basis, will work in the dead of winter in the village. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So, what specifically would be the downside of waiting until the, the business association can meet and discuss this? Alternatively, what, well, let's just leave it at that.
The, the disadvantage that I see to waiting would be the business association doesn't meet until March 10th. Then you, we would have to come back to you at your meeting on the 16th and get your approval, and then it will take a week probably to get the bags that will cover the meters. So, by then, we're into the end of March. To give it a 30-day trial, you're into the end of April, which would include school vacation week, which would include a lot of, I'm hoping that the end of April will be springy, and would be not the time that we would actually be looking at this for the future.
So, it wouldn't be a true winter test, you're saying?
That's, that's my thought, is that it wouldn't be a true winter test. I understand that this is hard to do when the business association hasn't weighed in. They didn't meet in February. We didn't have an opportunity to talk to them about it in February. This really came sort of January, and with the snow, and every, everything sort of came to a head, and there was an interest from the association in getting going.
I'd have a problem with doing it without the community, without the business group. If we were talking four or five months. If we're talking 30 days, it doesn't bother me as much to do this as an investigation trial period to find out.
Also, it's been publicized. We've gotten a ton of emails, some from business people, and, you know, it's a smaller number of businesses that are open, it's a smaller number of customers that would be affected. We're talking about quicker turnovers, so I think this would give the business association some information.
It's Woods Hole, we like to have experiments. You know, it gives us, it will give us some data, it will give us something to look at and see if it works. And I think that once we have that, if the business association says it really didn't work for us, or if the village says it really didn't work for us, we're going to come back and say, we don't want you to pursue this next year. If there's something that we can do to tweak it or change it, we'll do that next year.
I think we need to hear from the chief.
Oh, okay.
Because first of all, we have to know if the bags are available, if, when they can get them, and also how it's going to affect the parking rules in Woods Hole.
As far as the bags, they are available. It takes seven to 10 days once we order them. When we met, I know the Woods Hole Association said they would probably pay, or at least that was suggested, that they would pay for them. Prices, depending on what you purchase, 50 bags is $1,000. It's 20 meters, 29 meters, so, I mean, you've got to have some extra bags, too. I'm not saying 50 is the number, but it's, it's $1,000. There is a one-time $40 setup fee for printing the bags, because to make them official, you just can't put a bag over. People wouldn't guess whether you can park there or you can't. Have a bag printed with Town of Falmouth on it, town seal, and two-hour parking. The enforcement end of it, it would be similar to the 15-minute parking signs that are down there. The officer would have to write down a plate number and what time they are, and then return two hours later in his, in his patrol, and those cows would end up with tickets for violating the two-hour parking.
So, the two-hour would start from the time the officer saw the car parked there?
Well, that's, there's no other way to determine when it was there.
No, I was wondering how that would work.
If he doesn't make the round, let's say he's tied up somewhere or whatever, doesn't make a round for an hour, then I guess it would be three hours. It'd be from the time the officer, there's no way to determine when the car got there, unless you're standing there watching it. And he's not standing there, he's making the rounds through Woods Hole. But it's similar with the 15-minute signs. People sometimes complain they were there just for 15 minutes, but it's when the officer saw the car, wrote the plate number down, wrote the time down. So, yeah, it is, it is going to be a little bit of a challenge, but we'll try anything once.
So, that would mean like a pretty hefty sprint for the officer around Ludcombe and Water Street constantly?
But he's also got all the other meters and other, other areas, you know, they walk along some of the side roads to violations, things like that.
Right.
But that's how, that's how you'd have to mark them. I mean, it's the only fair way.
Hmm.
Hope that answers your questions.
Any questions? I mean, now, how, how soon do you think that you might be able to, be able to put that in effect? Say, if we were to vote on it, or whenever the day of the vote comes?
It's, the company says it takes seven to 10 days, depending on the amount of bags ordered. Once the bags were here, then we could determine the meters that we were going to cover, cover them, and try it.
Becky?
I think I would rather vote on it tonight, because first, we're talking two weeks to the 16th, and then we're talking another seven to 10 days to order after the 16th. I think we really are coming into April before we get this put together. So, I think if you can start with the 1st of March instead of the 1st of April, would be a benefit to Woods Hole, as I understand Catherine Bumpus to tell you.
Well, it's 10 days after.
Yeah. So, if the purpose is to have this as a winter project, I think we need to start this. My next part is the cost. Who's, who's paying for these bags? And is this coming from...
Well, again, it was discussed at the, you want to mark? I don't want, I don't want to put it on you, but you brought it up.
Right. If, if they're ordered out of town, the chief's got a price. I think we can locally source them, also very officially printed, for a little bit less money, and the community association is willing to do that. So, this would be, we are, we are making every effort to facilitate, they will look just like the ones that, yes.
That would be my concern. The town owns these meters, and the company we're purchasing from make them for meters so that the meters breathe, they fit the meters, they're capable of putting locks on them so they don't lock away. That's my concern.
I, I would think that we should consider what the chief is telling us as far as that. I, I think it probably should be, the way the chief is saying that.
I will tell you that, that you can locally source exactly the same product for, for less money and keep the money in the community, and get it done quicker. Really, exactly the same product rather than ordering from Minnesota, but that's...
I think you'd have to have a sample to provide to the chief.
I, I could convince the chief of this probably if it wasn't 10:30 at night.
Again, as, as I say, the, my concern with the meters, you just can't cover them with a product that isn't designed for meters. I mean, each meter costs enough, costs the town somewhere around between $800 and $900 for the meter head itself, never mind the components. Those are the components. The inner workings of the meters are, are between $700 and $900, depending on the meter. Not the casing, the inner workings.
I also want to mention that we had an email from, right, an email from Kevin Murphy, who has been away, and he's, is he the president of the business association? And he has asked that we not vote on this tonight, and that we give the business association the opportunity to have their meeting and to weigh in on whether they support this or not.
All right. Let's see what we think about that. If that was a negative, if that would come out as a negative vote, then this doesn't happen? Is that the point?
Well, I'm just saying, well, I, if the business association wouldn't support it, I would think we would maybe take their, take their opinions very seriously and want to know why.
All right.
I mean, I don't know. I, I would certainly, because it's the business people who, who really also care. I know the residents want to be able to go into Woods Hole and park their car, and go to the post office, and get their coffee and shop, and have a little, a time to have the community to themselves and not have to worry about whether they're going to get a parking ticket. And in the wintertime, it's the only time that could really happen, and that is essentially one part of this plan, is to give some relief to the residents in Woods Hole so that they get a break from having to feed the meters all the time. The business community, I'm not sure how this affects the business community.
Well, we have heard from five of them.
Yes, we have heard from five of them, and they all support it.
And they're all made businesses that are open during the winter.
So, we've heard from the majority of businesses that support it. So, I guess you're right.
Yeah.
So, then we don't have to, then we wouldn't have to wait. If five out, if the majority of the businesses support it, then...
One more question.
Oh, Mr. Finer.
I, Doug, Mark Finer, Precinct 6. I challenge anyone to come up with a logical reason why a business wouldn't support free parking in front of their business. I mean, it, it seems like to wait would not help them out at all.
Yes, sir.
Just a question about the locking mechanism. Does that come with the bags? Is that part of the price that you just gave us?
It depends on what we put on for a lock. We could do something similar to your electric meter, which is just a...
Seal.
A seal.
Yep.
Keeps honest people honest.
Right.
If they started being removed or disappearing, then we can put padlocks on them. That's what the design for, there's, the way that the meter is, the bag is, I have a picture of one if you want to see it.
I presume the reason is, is that you don't want people to steal those and use them?
Well, you can put them on another meter, and you can park wherever you want.
Exactly.
But I can give you that the enforcement officer actually will understand well where they could be.
This is from the company that makes them. It's got your Los Angeles on it.
Yep. Okay.
And a similar thing, put the town seal on it. But, thank you.
I think if this is part of a town decision, and that the police department is responsible, that the police department should also do the ordering. I mean, with whatever company that they're familiar with and know the product. I, I think it should all stay that way, that it should, it's the police department, it's the Town of Falmouth, and I believe the ordering should also remain with the police department.
Well, one thing we have to be concerned about is the cost, because it isn't something that's in the police department's budget right now. And one of the, one of the compelling statements was that the Woods Hole Village Association would pay for the parking, for the bags. So, I don't know, chief.
I would love to leave it up to the chief to be convinced by Catherine.
I would agree with that.
I think it's great, and if she can't, then we'll have to go with the process.
Yeah, my, my, my meter, meter budget right now is zero from what we've repaired the meters so far this year, and we have some more repairs coming.
So, there's no money?
No.
Not on the town.
That's what I'm saying. The money's coming from the Woods Hole Village Association. Well, subject to the fact of them being able to work out the finances, I would want to make a motion to go ahead with the experiment that the Woods Hole Association has recommended. For 30 days? Yes. Beginning on whatever day the bags can be produced?
I would suggest, I would rather have it be the end date of April 15th. If they can get them on there, by April 15th, they need to come off.
In other words, the end date?
Right.
That whatever day they come on, they have to be removed on April the 15th. Is that, that before Patriots Day?
Yeah.
I don't know when Patriots weekend, that's usually the beginning of school vacation. So, we want... So we want this to end before school vacation?
Yes.
Is that the idea?
Yeah.
So it would have to end the Friday before school vacation? That's a good nod to the business potential concerns, too. So back 30 days, say, March 15th or March 16th? March 15th or 16th to April 15th? I'm just making this up.
Well, Madam Chair, I think, I don't think you want to have it during school vacation.
No, you don't.
You're going to have a lot of traffic going to the vineyard, and people are going to take advantage of it.
Right.
No, I think the date time on that, I just think it's who's paying for it.
So I would have it end on the 15th, because the 17th is a Friday. I would have it done before that weekend even gets started.
April 15th is good.
And April 15th is a fine end date. And when it gets started, again, more information, if it can happen quickly, and we have from March 5th, because it happened like that until April 15th, it gives us a few more days of information.
So they would be removed by the morning of April 15th? And when they start?
It's tax day.
It's up to?
By the end of the day. By the end of the day.
By the end of the day on April 15th and whenever you get them started. All right, so let's craft a motion to that effect.
I would move approval of the 30, of the trial period of two-hour parking on the parking meters as listed in the letter we have for the Community Association, with the purchasing of bags to be worked out between the Community Association and the chief.
And the project will end on?
The project ending on April 15th.
On April 15th. Second.
Madam Chair, could I ask one item?
Yes, sure.
Would the board be willing, should any issues arise with details of one meter or another being in or out for whatever reasons that you allow the chief to work with me to make the final determination about what meter or meters are bagged and which are not? I think public safety would probably dictate that. If that would be agreeable?
I think we could add that to the motion.
I quite agree with that.
We'll add that to the motion. Did you get that?
I have. Should we ask the, while the chief would work, would you determine the correct bag to save these things?
And which meters specifically?
And which meters specifically?
Which meters? Which meters are bagged and which are not?
Yeah.
But just, I guess, for the public to know, what we're talking about are the ones on Luskam Avenue and the ones on Water Street to about...
To the Candle House.
Around Candle House.
Around the Candle House. So none of the meters beyond the Candle House would be bagged?
And this would not change any of the handicap parking or any of the 15-minute parking spaces.
Right.
The 15-minute parking would still be 15-minute parking. Those would not now become two-hour parking. That would be restricted just to the 15 minutes, which is across from the post office and I think a spot in front of the Woods Hole Market, two spots in front of Woods Hole Market.
All right. Okay, that's... So you have the motion now, do you? Okay. All right, so call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Go for it.
It's not an experiment.
Okay, Julian is going to make a brief presentation on the communication location alternatives. Yikes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board...
Do you need a break? Okay. Yep. Take a break.